Good evening and welcome to the 28th meeting of fiscal year 2023 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and we can begin by introductions of the board and staff. Jim?
Jim Davis, board member.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Sean Fahy, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair. And now our staff, Josh?
Josh Beckerly, Assistant Town Planner.
Julia.
Julia, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Unfortunately, Tim is moving tonight, so he is not able to join us, so a prior commitment. Alright, so let's go to our administrative items. We can begin, we have three sets of minutes. We can begin by approving April 27th, May 1st, and May 2nd.
Excellent.
We're gonna hold off on the, yeah, last two, but thank you. That's, yeah, we have two other sets of minutes, but we're gonna hold off until Cheryl has time to edit those. Has everyone had a chance to look at the threes?
I have no comments on any of them, I'm fine.
Did you have any?
The only comment, and it's just a general comment, was under public speak on Thursday, the 27th. I just noticed that we are now putting in the profession of the speakers. Is that what we're doing moving forward?
Not typically. Julia, you might have just added that.
We can eliminate that, that's fine.
Yeah, so whatever it is, but I don't know if we need to ask everybody their profession.
Is it relevant to the topic that was, the speaker was?
Was talking about MBTA zoning, said he was an architect, so.
In the past, it's been kind of like, you know, Alex Royce, I was a member of the Planning Board for 30 years, so.
Yeah, I think it's fine to leave it, I don't think it's, yeah, it's not a rule.
Okay, so we're not going to be asking people their professions moving forward?
No.
Not their professions, but their sphere.
Yes, okay, okay.
And they may have just offered that information.
Yep.
So I was actually not at that, is that the MBTA?
That's on the Thursday, April 27th.
Oh, okay, I was at that meeting, yes. Okay.
So Maggie, if you have some changes you want to make, just send them to me and I'll take them up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine to keep it and accept it as is. Alright, could I have a motion to accept the minutes for April 27th, May 1st, and May 2nd?
I'll make a motion to accept all three of those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion of next meeting dates. We have upcoming, we're gonna have another MBTA community forum for those who are interested in finding out more information in the process that we're going through on June 15th. And Josh, that is gonna be a hybrid, but there will be an in-person at the library, is that correct?
It will be in-person in the keys room of the public library. It will be recorded, but it won't be livestreamed in the same way as it was in the Council on Aging due to MMTV's limitations in the keys room space.
Okay.
So it will be recorded, but it won't be live and remote.
Terrific, okay.
And why are we classifying those as planning board meetings?
Because we're writing the zone, it's up to the planning board to write the zoning, it's the planning departments. It's really the planning department who is running those, we're not running those.
The only reason we've been posting them as planning board meetings is because we typically expect a quorum of planning board members.
If we all are in attendance, yeah.
Okay.
Good question. Okay, so we have June 15th, and then our next regular scheduled meeting, June 22nd, followed by July 13th, will be the next upcoming meetings.
July 2nd, July 13th.
And if anyone has a conflict, let us know, but that's where we're typically scheduled. And now with that, we can, Josh, if you have a staff update, I know you'll talk on certain topics as we go along, if there's anything in addition, yeah.
So I'll expand on MBTA communities on that agenda item. I just have a brief update. Yesterday, we received a site plan approval application from the folks at 152 Robbins Street. They're seeking to build a farm stand, so we're undergoing the technical review for that, and that'll be up for you all to discuss at your next meeting, but it's a relatively small project and should be a breezy technical review process. Then we'll be back next week, you won't be moving, so.
Great.
That's the only piece of news we have that's not covered in your agenda.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And if there is anyone here who would like to speak on anything, it is now citizen speak, you have the opportunity to speak, but if there's something on the agenda, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time, and you may wish to wait, you may, some questions may be answered at that, prior to getting there. So if there's anyone who would like to speak on anything else, please join us. And if anyone is on Zoom, do you see any hands for a citizen speak?
I have one hand for Mr. Paul Makashima.
Okay. We can invite Paul to join us?
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Yes. You can introduce yourself and state your address, please, for the record?
Sure, I will, but is, I can't see anything on the screen. Is that, is that intentional, or, I can't see any of you, and there's, I'm told that other people can't see you either.
Alright, we're trying to correct that right now, thank you. You should be able to.
Okay. Yeah, I still can't see anybody, but I can continue anyway. I'm sure you guys have a lot to do. My name is Paul Makashima, and I live on Harold Street, and I'm a member of a group of neighbors and a butters who have some concerns about the artificial turf project proposed for Lower Guile Road. Now, I've been made aware that this body typically doesn't weigh in on town projects, but I'm here to ask you to consider taking a look at this one. This project raises land use, neighborhood impact, and other issues that might reasonably fall under the purview of the board. And in addition, frankly, we believe projects like this one are likely to begin proliferating in town. So taking a look at this one, examining this one, will give you some familiarity with some of the issues involved. So for starters, let's look at the scope of the project and pose this question. When is a field no longer just a field? Right now, Lower Guile is an open, grass-covered, park-like space frequented by neighbors and sometimes used for youth sports, primarily during the day. The proposal calls for more than the conversion of green space to artificial turf, but the addition of permanent structures features more consistent with a small stadium, or at the very least, a venue that lends itself to games, tournaments, and other events. The new facility will no longer be open to the community, but only for authorized and contracted activities. The tab for the project is $2.4 million. So what does this include? A 1.3 acre artificial turf field, just barely big enough for a football field, jammed into a space bordered on one side by wetlands and the pine tree brook, and on the other by an embankment. On one end is a Little League field, and on the other, Guile Road. The area around the fenced field will be terraced, or actually, terraced stone seating for about 300 set into the embankment. Again, it's set into the embankment because this is a really tight fit. There will be stadium lights set as high as 90 feet above the field surface. Half of the lights will face in the direction of houses, some of which are less than 200 feet from the field. There are no fields in any other part of town besides ours, and that also, no other fields in any other part of town besides ours have either synthetic turf or athletic lights. Another major concern is traffic and parking. In addition to this field, there's the larger Upper Guile Field, Brooks Field, two Little League diamonds, and the high school itself. There could reasonably be multiple events going on simultaneously. Though the planned turf facility has occupancy for hundreds, there have been no special provisions made for parking beyond those already existing around the high school. As an abutant to the field who lives on one of the one-way streets over the bridge, I anticipate great disruption to the neighborhood. Finally, the issue of converting a grass field to plastic will create a question about public land preservation. The field currently is an open, natural, community green space used by walkers, old and young, kids on bikes, kite flyers, sledders, cross-country skiers, families watching Little League games, and golfers looking to work on their short game a little, in addition to the youth sports. In that way, it's no different than Kelly Field, or Andrews, or Mary Lane, or Shields, or Cunningham Park, which do not have lights or plastic turf, and which do offer clean, open, green space to neighbors. Once covered in plastic, Lower Guile will be locked and unavailable to neighbors, and will contribute heat and chemicals that are known carcinogens and endocrine disruptors to the wetlands and the brook. So we wanted to speak to you because it's clear there are issues involving general land use as well as parking and lighting, and this facility will be, for all intents and purposes, permanent. All of this is worth thinking about now and going forward. And I know we have limited time, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your comments. We do not typically, we don't respond to citizen speak, but at the end of our agenda, I have put a response to citizen speak as an agenda item, so we will be able to discuss it at that time. Thank you so much. Okay, anyone, any other hands?
No more hands.
Okay, great, thank you. So at this time, we can reopen our 1200 Brushhill Road, Scenic Road application, which is continued from April 27th. And welcome, Ned.
Thank you. Nice to be back. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the Brushhill Care Center, which is the property at 1200 Brushhill Road. I think we were the last before you formally on February 9th.
Right.
And I think we produced, arrived at an outcome relative to the replacement of trees. I realized today that I'm not sure that that was ever memorialized, so I've got a memo that I've just handed in that addresses what I think was agreed upon with respect to the replacement of trees, both through the planning board process and the Conservation Commission process. And I know my guys are anxious to order the trees and get going, and so I wanted to see if we could just confirm, if that was consistent with your recollection, if we could confirm what I put forward today. And I think, basically, it's that there were four trees removed, three within the town's right-of-way, on the outside of the road, a fourth tree that's within the Concombs jurisdiction, inside the stone wall, but within the 100-foot setback from the Fall Meadow Wetland. And so, what I understood to be agreed upon was a recommendation from the tree warden and stack that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to replace two trees that are not jurisdictional to Concombs with four yellow woods at three inches caliper per tree, and four white oaks at three inches caliper per tree. One of the, the third tree within the right-of-way is also Concombs jurisdiction. In that case, it would be four tulips at three inches per tree, and then finally, the fourth tree would be four white swamp oaks at three inches per tree. The trees are all to be replaced inside the stone wall and staggered in a way that they're, ensure their survival. They'll be planted with gator bags surrounding them so that they can be maintained properly with water, and that there would be a bond placed with the town in the amount of $2,100 to assure the tree's survival, and the bond would last for three years. And that's, that was my, those are my notes, and consistent with what I remember coming out of the hearing on February 9th.
And those were all requested by the Shade Tree Committee, too?
Correct. There were trees that are on their list, they're all natives, and they thought a blend of those trees was really most appropriate.
I recall we all felt comfortable with that, that we would support that, so.
And then, we're here more formally tonight, I filed a simple plan to replace the stone wall that was removed within the town's right-of-way. It was removed in part because it was, created such a narrow opening in and out of the property through the main driveway, that it became sort of a dangerous maneuver to get in and get out, and they took it down without realizing it was within the town's right-of-way, and therefore, the town actually owns the wall.
Right.
We proposed several options, but I think the last conversation we had with the board was, we just wanted to replace something in kind, without grout or other material, just a very natural wall. And so the idea would be to just use the existing stones, infill them as appropriate with similar stone, and pursue a wider sort of entry in. And I've highlighted on a plan that they prepared that just shows the old plan of the wall, and then the, a more gradual opening in and out. It would be easier to maneuver relative to all of the folks that are out there. I was out there late this afternoon, and there must have been three or four, there were three or four soccer games practices going on on Flatley Field next door, with cars parked all over the driveway. It was very difficult to get in and get out of this main driveway, and so this, I think, will make it more graceful, it'll be easier to get in and access, but at the end of the day, it will be the same materials that were previously there.
Okay. Questions for the board on that stone wall?
So my only question is if you don't have enough existing stones, just to make sure that any additional stones are kind of in-keeping character of color?
Right.
Grays and blues, and not tans and browns?
Grays and blues, okay.
And so I don't see any site, any elevations, you know, obviously, you don't. So I just, my question would be, the height would be consistent with what is existing in the rest of the wall, not to, as you had given us one example of a very tall, high entryway?
Yeah, what I did was, I attached a Google Earth image of the wall as it previously existed.
Right.
And essentially be the same, just widened, the opening widened.
Right, and your notes, Ned indicated it's gonna taper down to six inches, right, 36 down to six.
And you're no longer doing the monument signage that was gonna be inlaid. At one point, I think we were talking about doing something like a Walcott Woods, so that'll be a separate freestanding sign.
Correct. There is a separate application going through, we go to the sign review committee next week to allow a wall sign on the wall of the facade facing out to the entry.
Okay.
The facade itself is 92 feet wide and 40 feet, 45 feet tall. It's a massive structure, you know, it's a former, you know, it's been a nursing home pursuant to variance since the 80s, and before that, it was a rectory, not a rectory, but a place for priests for training. And so, it's got 160 rooms, it's a big, big building, just trying to, so, and we just did get a variance to allow, amendment to variance to allow outpatient medical services that are consistent with what would be available inside. So, for example, you know, outpatient cancer treatment that might be available, and other similar medical procedures that are available for people in, so the people who in Milton or in the area don't have to go elsewhere for services that aren't otherwise provided at the hospital or things. So.
Great.
They need, they do need visibility, and they think the best way to have that visibility is this wall sign. There's also variance that authorized a freestanding sign. There is a freestanding sign there now, it's located currently within the right-of-way, we do have to move it, but it can go always.
Great. Terrific. So, seems reasonable to.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns or.
We're up here in place.
I support what Ned has proposed, it makes sense.
So is that your motion?
I would make, I would. I would like to make a motion to accept the proposal that's been prepared and submitted by Ned for corrective work at 1200 Brushhill Road.
Including the tree plan?
Including the trees and the repair of the stone wall.
Yes.
As, as per Ned's sketch, which we can, we can include into the.
Yes, that would be great.
If you could just make sure that motion includes authorizing Tim to sign on your behalf.
Yes, and the motion would include authorizing Tim to sign on behalf, sure.
Second?
It hasn't been seconded yet.
It hasn't been seconded yet, that's.
I'll second it.
Alright, second. Jim, alright, then, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, see you in a minute.
Yes, we should actually close the public hearing, I should have done that actually prior to the vote, but just, we are technically closing the public hearing, so, and I'll make, would you like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Okay. And next, we can move to our second public hearing, which is 111 Highland Street, the memory care facility, which is continued from April 13th. So we can reopen that public hearing at this time, and Sean Riordan, if you would like to join us at the table, and.
Sure.
And you can introduce yourself for those who have not met you, and.
Actually, of all my work in the past couple of years, this is actually the first in-person meeting I've entered.
Isn't it nice? I know, you've been doing a lot of work on behalf of the town, so.
Just for those who don't know me, my name's Sean Riordan. I'm a civil engineer with the company called Tetra Tech. We're a civil engineering firm that's been in Massachusetts for 47 years. A few years back, I was asked to come in and help the ZBA review some 40B projects, so I serve as sort of a technical review consultant overseeing, you know, the big, sexy issues like stormwater, and traffic, and things like that. Just as sort of a technical guy to help sort of explain some of the issues, to help make sure the applicants are doing the work the way it's supposed to be done, to make sure that if there are solutions or there are things that need to change, that it's done in the correct way. I've been asked by the planning board in this situation to serve that similar role for the Highland Ave project, and I've started, sort of done my initial review and my second comment letter, and have been working with the applicant to address some of the critical issues there. I mean, in summary, everything's coming down right now to emergency access, and we've done enough review of the work product to know that, you know, their team is very competent, very professional, but until we finalize sort of the access improvements, and all the improvements that need to be in place to satisfy the fire chief, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to get really into the, into the really fine, fine things, because all of that's gonna change as some of the site elements change.
Right.
But, you know, so far, so good. We had a good meeting with the fire chief, and I think they're on their way to understanding the issues, and they're coordinating with the Concombs right now, because there's some give and take on.
Right.
More access usually means we're gonna get a little closer to the wetlands, so that's kind of gotta be worked out.
Yes.
So I'm here, I'll keep riding herd on them, and everything I do is, will be memorialized in a letter, so that all the issues that we bring up, they're tracked to closure, and we don't miss anything in the end.
And we are trying to be as clear on putting things on the website, as documents as they come in for, from, whether it's from the applicant or from Sean, and we're in the process of finding the simplest way to make all of that information and documents, particularly for the neighbors who are concerned, that you can see that, how things are progressing and what's happening up to the minute. And we can, we can address that a little bit later, but why don't we start, Ned, with where you are in your process, and I know a big concern, because we have a lot of neighbors here, Sean, that are really concerned with one of the ladder streets, a lot of the butters, what, both, I should say, traffic and water concerns. So, yeah, Ned, go ahead.
Thank you, Ned Corcoran, here on behalf of North Bridge Companies, which is the applicant for this memory care facility, joined at the table by Scott Thornton, who is traffic engineer with Vanessen Associates. He's been before this board several times in the past, including initial review of scope of work and follow-on presentation associated with that. We have received a comment letter through Tim from Sean and his team, and have submitted responses to that. We have some updates with respect to traffic. We're only here, available to talk about traffic, we're not ready, available to talk about any other issue, including issues of site access.
Right.
And otherwise, but we think traffic is a unique and discreet thing. We were before the Traffic Commission on April 27th. We think very strongly that this project itself doesn't create traffic issues. We know that there's concern among the butters and neighbors about traffic, in particular, the high volume of traffic that exists out there now. And we presented, I'll give you an overview of what we presented to the Traffic Commission, because we think that there's things that the town can encourage and do that can really have a significant and dramatic effect, positive effect out there.
Correct.
So the history is Upper Highland Street, you know, you can't access Highland Street from Randolph Avenue in the morning. Allen Avenue, Highland Street, Reed Street are all prohibited, left-hand turns. And so, the next opportunity to take advantage of the cut-through to get to Highland Street and out across to Thatcher Street and across to Blue Hill Avenue is to come up one of the ladder streets. As soon as you see Canton Avenue light turn, it's a five-way intersection. The next intersection at Central Avenue is a five-way intersection. It's very unusual in terms of major routes, that you would have two five-way intersections back to back, that creates significant traffic concern. People coming down Reed's Dale, from Randolph, have, can see the light turn at Canton Avenue, hook a left up the hill, predominantly Spafford Road, go down the other side and out Thatcher Road, Thatcher, and get to Blue Hill Avenue in Boston very quickly. You can also avoid that, the light at Canton Avenue for the purpose of getting to the high school in the morning. We know that there's a, we understand from the Traffic Commission that there's a fairly significant town cut-through to avoid the light to get to the high school, but there's also a significant commuter cut-through to get to Blue Hill Avenue. And we think it would be appropriate for the town to provide the same, no access to the ladder streets that are already provided for Highland Street. There's really no reason for traffic to be coming up the ladder streets, to come down around the backside to avoid the light at Canton Avenue. Reed's Dale Road is two lanes in each direction, it's a state number route. State highway on Randolph Avenue, it turns to a state number route as it comes left on Reed's Dale Road. Traffic should be required to stay on the road that's built to handle it. And so, we think that, we think that's appropriate. We've encouraged the Traffic Commission to take that up, and we've studied it. We've encouraged the Traffic Commission to adopt that and make that recommendation to the Select Board, and we're actually preparing to be before the Select Board at some point to help support that recommendation. But we think that's the single, the most significant change that can be made in this area to affect what happens with traffic. So with that, you know, Sean has a, Sean, Scott has a brief presentation. If you cut that up on the screen, we can sort of go through it and get into a little more detail on what I just discussed.
Perfect. Thanks, Ned. Scott Thornton with Vanessen Associates, traffic consultants for the project. So I do have a few slides, most of it is recap from the, or the early slides are recap from the previous presentation that I made, and, and actually, you know, it's fine to start on this slide. So, so this is the study area that we looked at for the, for the traffic study. Again, this was determined with the planning board at the meeting in December, and these are the locations that we reviewed. We collected new data in January, and looked at the morning, and the afternoon, and the evening time periods. In terms of, in terms of the project traffic, no changes in level service as a result of the project, minor changes in delay. And as Ned mentioned, we were here in March and presented the results of the site. Go to the next slide. So, we had some recommendations, including the driveway we posted for a left-turn-only exit. That's, we're further agreeing to have that enforced through a 24-hour video camera, to make sure that people that are exiting the site turn left to go to Highland Street back to Canton Avenue. All delivery employee visitor traffic will be instructed to use that approach. We've gone over the site access acknowledgement form before, where all the employees would acknowledge and sign a form that indicates the route that they're, that they're supposed to take. We have the ability to shift the times of the employee shifts, so, and there's, you know, most of the employees are on the first shift, less on the second, and then it's really just a skeleton that's there on the third shift. We have, we've identified on a preliminary basis some TDM measures. Tetra Tech had some, had some additional recommendations, and the applicant is, is willing to implement these TDM measures. And the last item we have. And the last item, we have, we really just echoes what Ned had indicated with the desire to work with the town and the Traffic Commission to limit the truck traffic on neighborhood streets and look at other devices to try to minimize the effect that's currently an existing condition. And the next slides get into some of that information.
Actually, see, it's not just to limit truck traffic. It's really all traffic.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely all traffic. So we were in front of the Traffic Commission on April 27th. We had looked at some, some of the traffic counts that we had conducted for the study and identified, identified the existing traffic conditions on some of these, these streets, focusing on Spafford and Buckingham. And, and we had come up with some potential solutions. So the next slide kind of gives, this is really the focus area with Spafford, Buckingham, Martin, Clifton. And as Ned indicated, you know, there's a, there's a significant volume of traffic that's, that's clearly not just the residential traffic. That's on Spafford and Buckingham. You know, 20 or so houses on each of these streets, you know, with a single access point, we would expect somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 vehicle trips. If it was just those, the trips from those houses that were entering and exiting the streets. If you go to the next slide, you can get an indication of, of the existing traffic. So to walk you through the slide, the Y-axis, if you will, up and down is the number of vehicles per hour. And then we have the different time periods across the X-axis. So the, the red and blue colors represent traffic flow on Spafford, with red representing the traffic going from Reed's Dale to Highland Street and blue representing the reverse direction. The, the green and yellow colors represent the traffic on Buckingham Road. So you can see that in the, in the peak hour, weekday morning peak hour on Spafford Road, there's 113 vehicles that were observed at that intersection with Highland Street, which is, it's, it's a, it's a problem for under, for the neighbors, and it's an existing condition that's there. In terms of Buckingham Road, there's, there's less traffic, but still 40 vehicle trips at that intersection with Highland in the morning is a, is a large volume and not typical at all. Moving to the afternoon time period, we've got 52 vehicle trips on Spafford. Again, much more traffic headed from Reed's Dale to Highland. In the afternoon on Buckingham, it's a smaller number, 23 trips. But again, the same kind of bias headed away from Reed's Dale. And in the evening time period, 51 trips on Spafford Road with 26 trips on Buckingham. So we also looked at the truck traffic at the, at these locations. If you could go to the next slide. And again, on, on Spafford Road, it's about four trucks in the weekday morning peak hour at that intersection with, with Highland and seven trucks on Buckingham Road. And, and in this case, it's a, it's sort of a mixed condition with traffic. One more truck headed back towards Reed's Dale than, than headed towards Highland. Much smaller numbers in the afternoon and the evening time periods. So again, these are existing, these are just existing volumes that, that were reported in January. So, so this gives you an idea of the, of the scale of the issue. And the next slide goes into some of the potential solutions that, that we had sort of talked about, identified as potential solutions there. So the next slide shows a traffic calming or traffic control program of do-not-enter signs similar to what's there on Reed Street, on Highland Street, on Coolidge Road, that have the, the do-not-enter signs at the, in this case, they would be at the Reed's Dale Road entrance for these streets with a time period, you know, primarily a seven to nine, Monday through Friday restriction is proposed. We would have, we're currently proposing to install that signage on Spafford Road, on Buckingham Road, and on Martin Road. On Clifton Road, we're proposing to leave that unrestricted so that the residents that live on those other streets could, would not have to go all the way down to Canton Avenue, to Highland Street, to then come back.
Because we understand that that will spur a reaction potentially with people on Clifton, so it's just something we thought about. I actually drove that route twice this evening, going from Randolph towards Canton Avenue. The, the light at Canton is not visible until you get to Martin Road and beyond. Because the way that, as you can see, Reed's Dale Road curves, it's at the, the Clifton intersection is at that curve before you come around to have any visibility of Canton Avenue. So it's unlikely that you would see traffic making that turn that quickly to avoid a change in light. But, you know, it is possible that as, if those do-not-enters are installed, that somehow people would get, would pick up on the notion that Clifton would become the one. And so we'd have to think about with the town whether Clifton should also be included. And then, you know, residents, maybe with a resident, non-restriction for residents so that residents could, some of those things we'd have to, the town would have to really think about. But we, you know, what we're thinking is that we would, we're willing to work with the town to help define what those solutions might be and then help implement.
Okay.
Yeah, we're also thinking that there's a number of stop signs on Highland Street. So the Spafford Road and Highland Street isn't always stopped. The, the Martin Road intersection with Highland Street isn't always stopped. And that may have the effect of discouraging traffic from, from coming onto Clifton Road and continuing west or north on, on Highland Street if that traffic wasn't destined for those ladder streets to start with. So, right, so that's, so that's this, this program. The next slide shows the, some information on speed humps. There's, there's several lengths that are available. They're, they're, it's a proven traffic calming strategy. The humps, rather than speed bumps, are easier for emergency vehicles to navigate. And, you know, any type of, of improvement or physical modification like this would, we would have to run that past the fire chief and also DPW to make sure they were, they were on board with this change. But the, the next slide shows where we had specified the installation of a speed hump on Elton Avenue in Watertown. And, you know, it, it was, they had a similar condition there. They were concerned about traffic speeding through the neighborhood residential street. It was installed in 2016. This is one of the few locations where we did a, we were able to do a monitoring study afterwards. And at, in general, across the, the street, reduction speeds to 16 mile per hour on average. And at the speed hump itself, speeds were reduced to 12.1 on average, 12.1 mile per hour and 13.5 for the 85th percentile speed. So really, you know, positive effect on reducing speeds. We also looked at, at traffic signage. You're aware that there's, there's a lot of these streets in the town. I think there's one on, on Clifton Road, actually, a radar speed sign, as well as the ones on, on Canton Avenue. And they can, you know, they can be, they can be static. They can be dynamic. The, the dynamic signs would be the radar feedback signs. They, they have a, they have a positive effect. I was watching traffic on, on Canton Avenue near, near one of these signs. And people were flying, well, people were traveling at a speed. And then once they, once they got the indication, you could tell them, you know, the, the traffic started, they were slowing down, and traffic was bunching up. So they do, they do have a positive effect on, on reducing the speed. The next slide, oh, so we go into some responses to Tetra Tech's comments on traffic. They had a request for the driveway site distance plan and profile, which, which we provided. They had also recommended signage on Highland Street at the crosswalk location. Again, TDM strategies, traffic calming. And then a commitment to work with the town on signal timing at Canton Ave and Thatcher and Highland Street. The next slide, I believe, shows, right, the, this is the site distance plan that just, that shows the, their site triangles. And we've got plenty of site distance out there. We need something like 270, 300 or so feet. Then we've got, we've got over 500 feet. And I think the next slide just shows the profile of the site distance lines showing that there's, there's no obstructions between a driver that's exiting the driveway and one that's approaching from either side on Highland Street. And I think the last slide is just that site access and egress acknowledgement form. And I think you've seen that before. We might have tweaked it a little bit, but, but again, this is, so this is, this is where we're at in terms of, in terms of responses back to Tetra Tech and to the town.
Okay. So I'll start with the board. Questions that you may have in reading through that, while we have Sean here and we can ask the applicant?
I do. I have a few, if you don't mind.
Do you want to go to start?
Yeah, sure. And I think most of these are addressed to you, Scott, although Ned may have to jump in. I'm going to try to go in order of your presentation. You said initially that shifting the hours, the work hours for the first shift, second shift. First, if you could, and maybe this is you, Ned, how many people are on that shift? How many cars might that be? Approximate.
I think the, the first shift, somewhere in the 30 to 35 range. We have the, we have the ability to time the start-of-lay shifts over two or three hours because some are kitchen, coming in early, some are housing, house help, and others are performing direct work with, with, with the residents.
Okay.
So those times can shift, and we can get a number of folks coming in between six and seven, so before the peak hour.
Okay.
And rolling through the peak hour at different times so that there's a, so that there's not a crush at any one time of folks coming.
I ask because I just wasn't sure how much that really would impact the situation. You know, how much time you had to move them either before or past, and how many people it is, how many drivers it might be, how many cars it might be.
Yeah, the, the, the total trips generated in the peak hour, you know, at the comparable site in Newburyport in the morning, it's 15 trips. That's, that's seven entering and eight leaving.
Yeah.
So 15 trips over an hour is one every four minutes, which is a fairly good spread, you know. People normally don't all arrive at one time. They don't all leave at one time. They, they kind of spread naturally. But the more we can shift those out of the peak hours into, into other hours that actually, we think we can manage that a little bit.
And the first shift starts at seven?
Generally starts at seven, but they can adjust for some to start at six.
Got it. Okay.
So before you move on from the employee?
Sure.
Are you done with your questions for employees?
On the employee one? Yes, at the moment.
So I have a question. I was just wondering, how many total employees are expected to be there? And along Sean's, how many employees per shift? And can there an agreement be made that there'll be no additional employees being added? And so that there is a do-not-exceed employee count?
I think we have to think that last one through, but I think, yes, we could agree to a maximum number of employees per shift. We just have to know what that number would be before we could, need to be before we could agree to it.
Because I know with my special permit, I have a do-not-exceed employee, employee count.
We can certainly, we can certainly look at that and, and, you know, time and, and manage that. You know, the, the first shift is the, the day, the day shift is the largest shift. And then it diminishes in the evening shift. And obviously, the overnight shift itself is much more of a manage the place through the night, be available for emergencies, et cetera. So in, you know, the, the second to third shift changeover is not an issue because it's happening in the middle of night. Real issue is when the third and the first are shifting over.
And it's three eights? Three eight-hour shifts?
Three eight-hours. But we'll get you, we will follow up with those, with, with specific data on those numbers.
Great. Go, go ahead.
Yeah. Scott, peak hours are what? Seven to?
Yeah, in, in the morning, around 7:15 to 8:15. In the, in the mid-afternoon, it's about 2:15 to 3:15. And I think about 4:30 to 5:30.
So the, the Spafford traffic, which was around 100 vehicles, happened between 7:15 and?
8:15.
8:15, one hour.
Yeah.
100 vehicles.
113.
Okay. You know, one, one of the concerns I have, and I can appreciate, you know, the restriction on three of the ladder roads, but I, I definitely have a concern that that traffic that was going up Spafford and going up Buckingham will eventually just go up Clifton.
Yeah.
And, you know, my own opinion is that there's an awful lot of drivers that are conditioned to using the ladder roads irrespective of what they conceive for the signal. They just take a left and use the ladder roads.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I don't know that many of them are trying to time or eyeball the signal. They're just taking a left turn and going up there. So I would, I would definitely have a concern, Ned, that Clifton could be just, have a deluge of traffic which would just overwhelm the, the residents on that road.
Right. We're clearly thinking that as well. This is, you know, this is a, a scope to look at with, with the Traffic Commission to come up with the right strategy. We're just, we were trying to be mindful of, well, if there's a no-left-turn restriction that applies to everybody, including the folks who live.
Right.
On the ladder streets.
Right.
How do you accommodate reasonable movements that they may have? Particularly in the morning. And so just thinking that, thinking out loud on that today, we, we started to think about Clifton. But I, but I agree. You know, if you think about the move, if you go from the light at Chickataut coming north on Randolph Avenue, there's a light at Hillside, there's a light at Reed, and then there's the light at, at Reed's Dale. When you take the left, there's that five-way light at Canton Avenue. There's the five-way light at Central. There's the light at Kelly Field. there's a light at Kelly Field, there's a light at St. Mary's of the Hills, there's a light, another light before you get to the food mart and then to Blue Hill Avenue. And if you turn up the latter streets and go down the hill, the only light you take, you, you, you hit is the one at Thatcher and, and Hill, and Highland. And that, that's actually rewards the cut through because when enough cars get there, it platoons them through.
Yeah.
Makes it easier, so you're right, people get, they get in that habit, they understand that. And the, the real goal here is to say, no, 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 this is, this isn't acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, in, in general, just to follow up on that, in, in general, where you have a situation like this where there's, you know, those four streets are the, are sort of the target and, uh, and anything that needs to be done on one of those streets should be done on all of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, this is just a way that we're, that we've been, you know, who we've been kind of wrestling with the, the issue and trying to, trying to preserve access for those neighbors that are there and not inconvenience them, you know, but also take steps to try to, uh, address this, this issue that they're having.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, my last point is, um, you know, anything that could be done, and I, and this is just a thought, to encourage people, uh, you mentioned the Canton Ave light, you know, recently, I've noticed that the timing on the Canton Ave light seems to be extended. Now, maybe it's just me, but I feel like I'm waiting longer at the Canton Ave light to get through it. Things like that don't encourage people to travel through the light, you know. Those type of measures encourage people to try to find the alternative, right, Scott? That's what they do.
Yeah.
Uh, that's just something that, um, and I'm not sure, I mean, there's, there's obviously, you know, there's a, there's a methodology to the signals to all of them, and, and it, it, there's an interconnected, an, an interconnectiveness to all of them, so, you know, what you do at one impacts another. So I, I don't know what the, uh, I don't know what the secret formula is, Scott, but obviously if there's a way that we could somehow, that flow that you just mentioned, Ned, you know, make it so that traffic would be, um, less, less, it would be more desirable to travel the road.
Right.
Uh, those are, those are my comments.
Yeah, I think the two, the two directions that are most affected by that light in the morning are the Reed's Dale Road going north towards Boston and the Canton Avenue coming from the high school.
Right.
Going, getting through that light at, at Reed's Dale. You know, that's, they're both, you know, the volumes that come through there in the morning is significant. And somehow managing to release as much of that traffic as possible, um, without overly impacting the other directions, um, would be key. We can certainly, you know, we said we can look at signal timing, um, as, as, as an issue, um, just to see if there's ways to tweak what happens with the signals, um, to make it, make it more effective.
Mm-hmm. You know, I think it would be less of a problem if it was Milton traffic only, you know, and, and I don't know what, I don't know how to manage that, but, you know, even if you had the latter traffic being Milton residents only that were on the latter roads, I think, uh, Scott, have you, have you encountered that in your experience of, of trying to, trying to accomplish that?
Uh, you know, it's, I have, uh, I have seen signs where it's, it's residence only, um, you know, a placard that's, you know, residents only allowed. Um, I don't know how well that, how well it works, I don't know how enforceable it is. Um, but, I mean, if, if it's, uh, you know, the other thing is that this can be, certainly the signs are relatively easy to, to install and, and it could be an iterative process where, where we look at, you know, one measure, if that doesn't work, then, you know, then, then something else might work.
Have you seen, have you seen a, um, a model that, um, the enforcement is such that cameras record, uh, registration plate and, and ticketed if you're not a Milton resident?
Yeah, I don't believe that's permitted in, in Massachusetts. I don't know, Sean, if you have any experience.
There's a lot of legal challenges associated with that.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, I have seen in the past where you have, the local residents are, are, are free to enter, so the sign, like Scott said, I mean, it seems like would work best here is, is local residents. And by local, I mean the people that live on the street.
Yeah.
And then if there is an enforcement provision, the, the police officer obviously has discretion. If, if it's a Milton resident, they're probably less likely to ticket them.
Going to their home, yeah, leaving their home.
The other thing that's important is, is communicating any restrictions to the navigation apps, right? Because, you know, I'm pretty guilty, I, I pretty much just follow the purple line, put my ways in and just trust it and, and follow it. So if, if this information doesn't get communicated to the navigation apps, then you sort of, you lose out on that benefit as well.
Yeah.
So how does that get communicated?
It's actually a good question, there's, there's a lot of ways it does. Some of it, it's just the, the inventory that the, the services do, um, but I think there are, and you might know, Scott, there, there are ways that the towns can communicate restrictions to the, the navigation apps.
Yeah, there's a, I, I believe there's a federal, there's a, there's a federal website or something that, that you can, you can go into, identify what party you're with and, and address some of the, some, some restrictions that are in the area that you're trying to, to get the, the navigation system to implement. Um, I haven't had experience with it, but, uh, but I, I do believe that that exists.
Cause I have run into problems, um, cause I have a business in a residential district and I do get, um, deliveries and I am on no, a no truck route on MDC roads. And if they're from out of town, out of state, when they put in their, um, their GPS, our address, they come down the MDC roads and then they kind of freak out a little bit because they're not supposed to be there. So they're not very good, even the truck drivers don't have great navigational, um, systems. Um, cause I think they have to pay a lot, I think for a truck driver to get a truck route, it's a very expensive, um, um, app for them. So it's kind of a bit of a challenge.
In this, in this case, there is zero reason for trucks to be on any of these roads unless they're making a delivery.
Yeah.
Right, or garbage trucks.
Or a garbage truck doing a weekly, there's otherwise no reason for truck traffic to be on the latter streets at all.
Yeah.
Right, they, the volume of trucks that, you know, you counted, it's not insignificant.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And I think your study suggests they're not using Spafford, it's too narrow for them, they use Buckingham. Is that what it is? Yeah, it's one or the other, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and one last question, um, it, if you were to sign on Reed's Dale Road, is, is it possible that you could sign it in a way, and I, I know you mentioned, Sean, uh, local traffic, but could it be as specific as, um, restricting traffic other than latter road residents only? You know, is that possible?
It, it has to be, it has to be a very short message, so.
Yeah.
Like, like three words, two words.
Yeah.
Because it has to be able to be perceived in, you know, in a fraction of a second.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, but something like, like local residents only or, you know, latter street residents, maybe, um.
Remember, it, it always does come down to enforcement too, so, so I think it's as easy as, over time, and anybody who's doing enforcement, there's gonna know who the residents are.
Right.
We're not talking 700 homes, we're talking, you know, a handful. So I think there's gonna be a sort of a, a natural evaluation process during enforcement. Clearly, if, even if it says no entry, I think any police officer's gonna, gonna understand the situation and, and grant some latitude to the, to the residents there. And then as.
Good point.
As the Milton residents start showing up, depending on, on sort of the level of respect they show, maybe they get a break. But clearly, if you're from out of town, then you're doing this, and then if you're, you're continuing an offender, then maybe you can take other actions.
I think one of the other challenges too, Sean, is on, on Reed's Dale, the speed of the traffic on Reed's Dale, a driver is gonna be into their turn onto a latter road before they likely will even see the sign or, or the lettering on the sign.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's, it's just, it's a fast road, there's a lot of traffic and people are turning before they even see what's, what's, uh, what's posted.
What may happen is the first time they, once, once the sign goes up, they may, they'll notice it because it's bright red, it's, and it's good size, so it's almost like a stop sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the other thing is that, uh, some of the sign, the stop signs on Highland Street have LED flashers, if you're headed in one direction, they have them, if they're, if you're headed in the other direction, they don't. And the difference between, I mean, they're very, you know, the, the LEDs really get your attention. They have those in the do not enter sign, uh, category as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, so you have, if you have these, excuse me, if you have these LED signs, do not enter, uh, signs, you may not be able to see all the texts in the, in the center slot where it says, you know, seven to nine AM, Monday through Friday, but you'll certainly, you'll certainly see the do not enter part.
Mm-hmm.
So that may be another, another alternative.
I, I caution you, it, it does mess with the character of the street, right?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, and usually those are for like safety issues and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But I think.
Yeah, I agree.
You also can consider a, a full-time exclusion, um, except, you know, just not, if, if people don't notice that there's a, a window of an hour or two that they have to, you know, hopefully their, their instincts are just, don't take the road ever, right?
Wonder in regard to that, whether you, whether it would make sense to think about it on both ends? You know, restricting traffic from coming down off of Highland? Um, as well as restricting traffic coming up off of Reed's Dale? Um, and just make it, really think about a restriction that is relative to residents only.
Yeah, so in other words, make all of Highland residents only.
Right. Highland Street, we'd love that.
And Thatcher, I always thought it should be Thatcher coming out of Boston, um, at the return hour, four to six at the foodie.
I mean, the, the issue is, it is so appealing, right? It is, it is such a good cut through that, that it's gonna be hard, it, it's gonna take really, a heavy effort.
It's why the town agreed to put no left turns on Randolph Avenue 30-some years ago. And then 20 years ago, it was still a problem with the volumes coming through, so they put the light at Canton Avenue, Thatcher and Highland. And all that did was reward the cut through because it created platoons. Instead of having waited a stop sign for an opening, you, you got to go through six, seven cars, eight cars, you know, and you don't have to wait very long, boom, you're through. It really does reward the cut through in both directions.
Yeah, and the navigation apps know all that, cause, cause the minute one car gets through quicker than the car over there, it's, sends you over there.
And, and is the graphic, is it the 37 was traveling from Highland down? Um, the, I think the 76 is Reed's Dale up, right? Is the 30?
Westbound, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so it's not insignificant, Ned, 37 cars going down Spafford.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and, you know, we looked at the, at the volumes and we, we were focused on the sort of, you know, particularly in the morning, the traffic from Randolph Ave headed west or headed north, past, you know, past the Canton Avenue and Reed's Dale intersection and, and up Thatcher. Um, and there's as much turn, as much traffic turning left from Reed's Dale onto Canton as there is turning left from Highland to Canton. And there's almost as much traffic going through from Highland as there is turning left. So there's, there's a lot, and there's nothing else that's there, I mean, that's, there's, there's the, um, you know, there's the, there's the police station and there's the hospital.
Yeah.
That's, that's not 200 or 300 vehicles worth.
So they're basically equalizing those, the capacity of those two intersections?
Absolutely, absolutely, they're balancing out the, out the.
Yeah, I would bet that a fair volume of that traffic heading down the hill in the morning is traffic that is getting to the light at Highland, taking the right, up and down and over to avoid the next light, right, at Canton and Reed's Dale.
Mm-hmm.
By the library, right?
Well, my last comment on this, I know, I know this, the focus on this now is a result of the project that you're representing, but I hope for the neighbors and all the people that live on these latter streets, especially the people in Spafford, I hope we find a way to solve this. It's unbelievable, I mean, 113 cars in one hour, every morning?
Yeah.
None of us would like that.
No, it's, it's.
And it's a narrow road.
It's a problem, it needs a solution, and the town really, you know, we're urging the town to, to, to find a solution, we're providing the data.
Sure, understood.
To help the town make those types of decisions, but, but, you know, and this board certainly can.
Yep.
You know, can make that same recommendation. I think ultimately the select board has, has the authority and will make the same presentation to the select board.
Right.
At a near, at a, you know, a mid-future meeting, um, near-term future meeting, but, um, this is, you know, this is important. Um, I'm not sure that the traffic commission agreed completely with what we've indicated, um, but this data, this data is pretty straightforward.
Very good.
So in just, oh, sorry.
That's all, I was just, thank you, appreciate it.
I was gonna say with the, um, resident restrictions, cause I know in my neighborhood, we have them as well, um, the do not enters, and it, we, it does not, it applies to all residents. So they don't give out, um, restriction, the, all the restrictions apply to all the residents. So, but our neighborhood has felt like it was worth the inconvenience to us. Um, so for, if I'm on Canton Ave, the skating rink, I have to go all the way Chickataby, I'm, Unquity and Chickataby and to come home to my house. But our whole neighborhood has agreed that it's worth it to keep the cut through traffic. So that's sort of, I think, a neighborhood, um, issue, um, and that you, you have to decide if it's worth, um, um, all the restrictions to help your neighborhood with a little inconvenience to get home.
Good point, good point, okay. All right, and the only, I just wanted to say thank you to Sean, I think what the work that you've done is excellent. Um, there've been so many excellent comments and things that I was thinking about before, seeing like the sweat path analysis, um, that's being done, it's in progress, I know, and changes may be being made, but that's something that, um, the circulation around the building is, is emergency vehicles is very important. Um, anything that you are implementing, I just was gonna ask, another good point is to add to the site plans when you're proposing signage, crosswa, you know, that those are actually going on to the, the, uh, the plans as well. Um, and if you could just keep us updated when you have, um, such as the, the sight line, um, the calculations on that, um, that when you have sent those to the town, I don't know if you've done that yet, um, for their review, it's, um, was one of Sean's recommendations. Um, it's the SSD, the intersection sight distance plans?
We've given that, well, we've given that.
That was in your meeting, I'm sure.
That's great, okay, so those are all the calculate, great, all right. So I don't know if, should that go to Chase Berkeley, anyone else, DPW? Um, I can ask him to.
It doesn't have to.
Circulate it, okay.
Chase and I talk often, but.
Okay.
But I mean, I, it, it can't hurt.
Right.
Um, I generally don't, my focus is usually on the fire chief and making sure.
Right.
His needs are taken care of, usually Chase and I are thinking the same thing, so.
Great, good, so you're in, um.
Oh, so following up on that, when was the sight distance review, uh, performed? Was it during the winter months when maybe the trees weren't leafed out? Or is it, cause, you know, it's a wooded scenic way?
Yeah, it, it was done in January, but, you know, we can, um, there, there's, there shouldn't be any issues with maintaining the, the clear distance there.
Well, and it, just a similar question, so we have not yet gotten to the landscape plan on that front buffer, but we do wanna see a nice buffer for the neighbors, um, so maybe that is reviewed once we know what the landscape plan is, cause we'd like to see some, you know, some trees that are evergreen and, and really give a, a thick, you know, heavy buffer to, to some of the, um, neighbors, so.
And that's, sorry, sorry.
Yes, good.
But, but that's the reason why, like, there's, there's not a sight distance issue there right now, it's straight street, clear lines of sight, but the idea is you, you, you put it on the plan so everybody knows where it is.
Right.
So nobody plants a tree in a location that it doesn't belong. So it's kind of, it's a maintenance provision as well as just sort of getting it on paper so that everybody understands where the, where the sight lines are.
Great.
We have, we have recommendations that any vegetation or landscaping that's provided should be below two feet in height in that, in the area of that sight triangle. Beyond that.
Right, okay.
That can, the, the buffer can be higher.
Okay, good, all right. Um, so that was the other thing, and then also, one of the things that you had talked about, and I know you're working on the location, is the bicycle racks. I know you're working on that and we would love to see that on the plan as, as part of a way to mitigate some of that traffic in and out.
Yeah, two things, one was electric charging.
And the other, that was another question.
The other is bicycle, we're all working on location, whether, whether bikes with storage would be inside the building, outside the building, there's some showers on the lower level, so having it proximate to there would be, could be appropriate.
Do you have locker rooms for that?
There, there are something like that, I, they don't, those haven't been fleshed out in the details of the architecturals, but there, there is some discussion internal about that.
It always is, it's, there's a direct correlation between having the facilities to shower and how much bicycle use you get, so you, it, it is a, an important characteristic. If you have shower facilities, people are much more prone to taking bikes than if you don't. So to Ned's point, if they can provide some, a shower facility and, and, and put the bike storage near there, that's always, obviously a good thing.
Great.
Oh, sorry, and then another question, um, I know, was on number 38, where it says that veh- vehicular access will generally be limited to facility vehicles such as pickup trucks, vans, so how many facility vehicles are, um, are going to be there?
I don't know the answer to that, probably one or two, um, likely one. And then there'll be vehicles that service multiple locations, and so they'll be coming in and out. But the shed, this, this question dealt specifically with, with, you know, access and storage around the storage shed and the rear parking area.
Wanted to know how that was gonna be used, what it was intended for. It's a little nebulous and, it's a big shed.
Into limit, will there be a limit to the number of vehicles that will be permanently parked and owned by the applicant?
I will explore that question, but my sense is yes. And they're much more likely to be servicing multiple locations than to have any specific vehicles located at any one location.
To Maggie's point, I don't think they want, they don't want that parking lot to become the storage area for all the vehicles that serve all the other properties.
Very true.
Meredith, I have a question, and it's probably a comment first and then, and then a question for Scott. Ned, in some of the previous meetings, the neighbors had expressed significant concern for safety, you know, walking on Spafford. And at least in my opinion, it was probably prior to at least me understanding, you know, the traffic data that Vanessa has prepared. And I wonder, and I wouldn't want to propose anything for the neighbors on Spafford that they wouldn't want, but would a sidewalk on Spafford, you know, provide some safety? I'm sorry, would a sidewalk on Spafford provide some safety for the neighbors? I think it would. Now, maybe if there weren't a hundred and thirteen cars going up the road between, up and down the road between seven fifteen, eight fifteen, safety would be mitigated, or the risk would be mitigated, but I'd like to, you just at least include that in the conversation, you know, that if the, if the neighbors desired a sidewalk, would the applicant, you know, consider that? You know, paying for the cost of the sidewalk, you know, to provide better safety for the, for the traffic, the foot traffic on Spafford?
There's several components to that question. First is, which side of the street gets the sidewalk?
Do you want my answer?
No, the neighbors would have my answer.
I realize that, but after driving Spafford, just from my perspective, it's achievable on the right-hand side as you go from Reeddale up to Highland. It's difficult on the left-hand side.
So that is one. Two, we could not pay for the installation of a sidewalk. That's a significant capital cost. But we did reach out to the town administrator and some of the neighbors to say, if there's a desire for a sidewalk, we could work with the town to create some sort of a financing plan where they could allocate a portion of the new tax revenue that would come from this development to pay for the, for the installation of a sidewalk. But, you know, we're talking several hundred thousand dollars of costs to design and install a sidewalk, and that's beyond what we have the capacity to pay for. And it's not, it's not an impact, it's not solving an impact that we're, from mitigating an impact that we're creating. So there's no, there's really no basis for us to do that. We are, but as I said, we've expressed an interest in trying to get creative in how revenues flowing to the town from this development could be used to provide.
Yeah, effectively-
With its own legal issues as well, but-
Yeah, effectively, the town's paying for it, you know. I mean, I hear, I hear your suggestion, but it's really no different, you know, whether it comes from the tax revenue from the property or whatever, however, the applicant wouldn't, you're saying, be interested in contributing to it.
It's worth having a discussion.
I don't see how we could.
Yeah, and I bring it up because obviously, this is a change to the, to the neighborhood and the setting that everybody lives in, right? So some of it is just, you know, giving something back, right, for, for the impact that the development will have to the neighborhood. It's for that reason I bring it up.
Could, could the applicant pay for the design of it? We could certainly evaluate that.
Because it's obviously a big benefit or a big help to the town to have, you know, a biddable document set. It makes just one less hurdle that they have to overcome. So if the applicant could pay for the design, then the town would have something in the can ready to build if the funds presented themselves, the opportunity presented itself.
Yeah, Sean, I'd like to get a better handle on what it really costs.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, honestly, it's not, you know, I'm not out there putting in sidewalks every day, and probably neither are you, but it'd be good to understand what that value really is, a real value, right?
And if, and if maybe not even an official sidewalk, like I know right behind Town Hall here, they've created like, they've used like a California berm, just an asphalt berm. So maybe even if it's an asphalt berm with a, like a dirt path that might only be three or four feet, so the kids can at least ride their bikes from one house to another. So it's not like an official granite curbing. And maybe it doesn't have to be quite as wide.
I think that would be, well, it's an interesting idea. It would require a determination from the town whether accessibility requirements would require, would allow that. You know, accessibility rules have changed a lot recently, and that would be, from an, from an access perspective, that could be a no-no. Because if it's not capable of being used by someone in a wheelchair or otherwise, probably be prohibited from doing that. But it's certainly worth exploring.
Nothing's easy anymore.
No, no, certainly. And are there any residents, butters, who have any questions that you would like to speak? All right, Ned, are you finished with everything? I don't want to-
We are, unless there's other questions, we're happy to stay and respond to questions-
That would be great if you could.
From neighbors, I know council here is-
Excellent.
Any one group of neighbors.
Yes, if you would like to begin, yes, interest.
I am here representing the wealth who live at one seventy-nine Highland. This has been very informative, I had a, I think, five pages of questions. It's been whittled down from this very informative presentation. As far as traffic is concerned, is there some goal here to distill all of this so that all of us, at least this person anyway, can understand whether we're talking about a zero-sum measure of protection here, safety, traffic control? Is it going to be a plus or is it going to be a negative? How much of this is going to be so detrimental to the neighbors that it overshadows the detriment that this project is going to have? So is there going to be something like that? I noticed in your new dialogue, there is a requirement under sub N for a statement of significant impacts and measures that are going to be employed to overcome. I see a lot of different things you were going to have. I've learned a lot about traffic tonight, and I probably violated half of those rules that they remite them, but on occasion. But I think that I'd be looking for, and I know that my clients would be looking for something that distills all of this so that everybody can make a more informed decision on how, how we see. Through the chair, is that something that Ned can address?
Yeah, if you would like to, Ned, address that, that would be fine.
Well, the starting point, I think, is the traffic impact analysis that we submitted with the application.
I read that, and I, through the chair, I didn't see a lot of these materials. Did you load these up to date, Ned, or, you know, your PowerPoint?
Tonight's PowerPoint.
That came through today.
Came through today.
The slides, but the materials, a lot of it was a recap of materials that do exist through, through the planning department.
And that's all available under Development and Zoning Proposals.
No, I checked this morning, but I've been out of the office, so it came in today.
Good.
I missed it, my apologies for not doing it.
No, it was more of a recap, yeah, there was a lot new.
Nothing new came in today. This PowerPoint was prepared today for tonight, that will be certainly loaded. Every other document that we have submitted to this board or to the Conservation Commission has been separately submitted to the butters. Every document in the last two years has been shared with the butters.
And I'll review that, and my apologies for not reviewing it.
Yeah, that's good.
But for example, if we're talking about the sight distance plan, I didn't see any analysis. You know, I see all of these distances, but to me, what's the effect? What's the effect going to be on traffic control? Is it going to be something that is going to be gainsaid, that it's going to save lives and make the whole process safer? Is there, is it contemplated that that's going to be prepared, some kind of an analysis? And then similarly with all of the traffic calming, is there a plan to, again, distill all of that so that we understand? We can't implement them all, I'm sure, but to allow this board to pick and choose and find out which is going to be the most effective and the least detrimental to the neighbors and the butters, including my clients. Is that something that makes sense to the board to follow through on?
Yes, and we are doing that, and I think our goal is to, because there are existing conditions that are, are just horrible right now, that I think the, the goal of our board is to actually improve the current situation that exists and improve, particularly for the neighbors. And Ned, just on the analysis, do you want to, the sight line, for example, do you want to address that? That was done, or Scott?
Sure, so in the initial traffic study, there's the documentation of the speeds that we observed and the sight distances there. In the last, in the response to Tetra Tech, that went in June first, there's, there's that information, there's the sight distance analysis in a graphical format of the planned profile that you saw tonight, as well as some calculations. So that's been done.
I saw that, in fact, I read that this morning. But is there any analysis to assist those that are not expert in this area to what it all means?
Well, that's why you-
It is technical, yeah.
Well, the, the good news is, is that there are plans and documents in the submitted. The bad news is they're about as simple as they get, so you, any, any explanation would have to probably come through this forum, because there are, there are rules and guidelines for how you do a traffic analysis. There's rules and guidelines for how you determine sight distance. So all of that is in there, and I think that's part of the reason that we're here is, is it's almost impossible for laypeople to get through and understand it. The best we can do is have people like me and Scott available, and if there are questions, that we can answer those. But to answer your question about how everything gets synthesized, what we, what we hope to see is that it all gets memorialized on the approved plans. If this project does get approved, there's a set of plans that go with it, that all of the commitments that get negotiated and resolved are shown on those plans, and that's, that's what the applicant is, is committed to doing.
Do you provide any guidance, again, through the chair, I don't want to-
Yes, no, go ahead.
Do you provide any guidance? And I understand what you're saying, but are you going to provide some guidance either through Tetra Tech or through the applicant to allow this board to make an informed decision as to whether or not all of this is going to be so substantially detrimental to the neighbors, which is part of the zoning code, that it's, it's got to go back to the drawing boards, as it were? Because that's, I mean, we could deal with lots of figures and all that, but I don't think it's fair to the neighbors that they've got to go out and hire their own traffic consultant to wade through all of this stuff.
Right, I mean, certainly they're, they can do that, but of our, our opinion of the project at this point is the project in itself is not a significant enough contributor to the, to the network. The, the problems that exist are born from the volume on the current roadways, of which the new project is a very small percentage of. So the likelihood that the project results in a net negative impact on the network is de minimis, in our, in our, in our view. Particularly with the commitments they've made with regard to limiting access, that they, you can only use Highland Street. So from our standpoint, it's, the project itself hasn't created any new issues, but the project is a mechanism for how to solve some of the existing problems. And that's, that's what we're working on right now, is how can we leverage the applicant right now to help bring their talent to bear on coming up with new solutions that maybe people haven't considered before? So that's what we're discussing just beforehand, about all these, all these ideas about signal timing and restricting access to certain roadways as a function of the applicant going beyond just their project, recognizing they're part of this community now, and how can they sort of solve some of the problems that might exist right now?
I have, I'm sure the hour's late, there are other people that want to ask questions. I have one more, and perhaps that's something I can work out with Ned. I went through, and maybe I don't have a complete up-to-date bit of information, perhaps was uploaded this morning. But I count roughly twenty items on your reports, report number one, report number two, that either are fully or partially unresolved, at least by my count. And I'd like to go over them with Ned or with whoever he nominates to try and weed, weed through that and see whether or not these are truly resolved or resolvable. I mean, I can read them off in the record if that's important, but I'm happy to do it off the record with Ned at an appropriate time.
I'm happy to do that off the record, but what I can say is that we provided initial response to Tetra Tech's first set of comments that did not include responses regarding traffic. We've provided a second set of responses that are limited to traffic. We haven't, we have yet to respond more broadly to the second set of comments that are not traffic-related. And we're still doing some site planning around some of those issues to know how we're going to respond.
The way we would envision this concluding is all of our comments get resolved, either by virtue of a, an agreement or a response by the applicant, a condition by the board, but every, the reason they're numbered one through seventy or so, because everyone will eventually end up in a resolution.
I, for example, I see question forty-seven, forty-eight, which are traffic-related. Those have, those weren't responded to, at least that I could see, maybe in this morning's submission, but fire access-
Excuse me.
Figures showing large design vehicle.
Right, so all of those things in one way, shape or form will get, will get resolved.
I did not, I did not specifically respond to those questions with this set of responses, because we haven't resolved that.
Okay, I'm not trying to put you out of the spot, Ned, I just want to, I'm the new kid on the block.
They will be answered, yeah.
It's kind of a whittling process, right? So we, it's a laundry list, we put everything we see, because we, we see our role as a sort of twofold, is that we're here to serve the board and the townspeople, but we're also going to try and provide a service to the applicant in sort of giving them another set of eyes on the project. So if we see anything that causes a concern, we put it and we list it, and then we track it till its conclusion. Some are easy, low-hanging fruit, some take sort of an iterative process like the fire access. That's, it's a tough, a tough thing to solve, particularly on this site, and it includes discussions with many people. So that's something that's, that's going to end up being a lot more paragraphs before it ends up getting resolved. Some are just a simple paragraph that gets resolved right away, but others take a little bit more time to work through. But the goal is, when we're done, everything has, there are no unresolved issues on the, on the list.
Thank you, Sean.
And I just have a question about that. So on your, I like how your responses are all laid out, but I, when you say comment resolved, how do we know what the resolution was? Because I remember looking at one of the forty-B applications that I wasn't following very, very closely. And when I was, same thing, you said comment resolved, I'm like, well, where do I find the resolution?
Usually when it's just comment resolved, it's, it's a little ticky-tack thing that we said, you misspelled something, or it wasn't of substance. If it's, if it's a substantive issue, we'll usually put a description as to how they resolved it.
Okay. And with the fire, I know we're not there yet, but it's also, will the fire chief come in and talk to us as well?
We'll get a letter typically.
Not just through you?
If we would, if we requested him to come in.
Yeah.
But usually we work, yeah, through Tim and Sean.
Yeah, you'll give them to our department and to Sean.
In the way I, the way it usually goes with Chief Madden is, is the fire chiefs are sort of committed to doing their job. They'll figure out a way to solve every problem. What I typically do as a service to the chief is say, chief, are you comfortable with this? Like, because I'll see things that I'm not comfortable with. The chief may not have noticed it in our dialogue, I'll bring it up to the chief and I'll say, you know, chief, you realize that you have to turn the truck around in a three-point turn? He's, oh, yeah, I don't know, we can't do that, right? The chief's not in the business of reviewing their plans. That's my job, so I help the chief sort of identify where the issues are, and that's where our discussion has gone with the chief, and we think we've moved it along. The next step is, once they address the sort of the, you know, nine of the ten issues that we've identified, then we come back and reconnect with the chief, and hopefully we figure a solution for that tenth issue, and then we're-
And also, you, you kind of also go with the, not just the chief, but the regulations of the National Fire Protection Association.
Yeah, yeah, that's where we start. The odd thing about the NFPA is it grants a lot of latitude to what they call the AHJ, the Authority Having Jurisdiction. That's the fire chief. So the National Fire, the NFPA regs will set rules, but they always give the fire chief- chief the latitude to relax those rules. So that's why it's always incumbent upon us and the applicant to sit down with the fire chief, make sure these things get memorialized, because the fire chief today may not be the fire chief in 10 years. So, you know, that's where the, there are rules, but they're allowed to break them with the permission of the chief.
And do they have specific rules and guidelines for memory care units or assisted living? Because I quickly did a Google search on it, it was very difficult to find.
Yeah, not specific, it's more, it's more fighting a fire specific, it's how do I, how do I get in and out of a facility with the, it's more of a construction type than it is the people that are in it. One of the things that we did ask about, and I was concerned about, is a very tight site, a lot of things going on, if there's a response, you're going to have a lot of people coming out of the building. And one thing I asked the applicant to look at is, okay, I want to know how many people are coming out of these different locations, because if we've got a fire truck, an ambulance, and another fire truck, and 75 people coming out this door, we've got to provide a little more space for that to happen. So I saw that that was in the--
Yeah, I saw that.
--submittals, and that'll be part of our next discussion with the fire chief, so that, you know, the first step is identifying where we're a little uncomfortable with what we see, then we gather some more information, get some more input, then we sort of get around that and see if we can come up with a solution that satisfies, satisfies it to my opinions and the fire chiefs and the applicants. That's the next step right now, is right now, what I saw was just too tight, too hard for a fire truck to get around. Not even including in all the stuff that comes out of the facility when something happens. Now, I'm looking forward to seeing what they come back with next, and seeing how much of those concerns have been addressed.
Thanks. Any other, Bart, if you would like to come introduce yourself and--
Yeah, sure. Yeah, of course. Thank you. I'm Bart.
You just will need the microphone, yeah, whatever.
Thank you. Bart, I'm Riza, 11 Safford Road, hello everyone, nice to see you all again, and I think, is it Sean?
Yep.
I would just like to start off by saying, you know, thanks to everyone for all your thoughtful comments and really digging in and trying to think solutions, and also thanks to Ned and Scott, they, I thought they presented very well to the Traffic Commission last month or whatever, whenever it was. Ned put in context, and you repeated some of it tonight, of how changes over the years have encouraged cut-through traffic, particularly on our street, on Safford. And, you know, part of our frustration is that when we've raised some of these concerns in the past, we've been told by town officials that we can't just worry about your street, we have to look at this holistically. So it's like, well, the fact that you haven't done that has led to our problem, and now you won't help us with our problem, it's not really a good answer, you know what I mean? So I'll just set the table with that. But then, I would just like to make one comment, macro comment, and that is, you know, when we talk about low impact or minimal impact on the road network, I think, you know, obviously if you look at the volumes of traffic on Reevesdale or even Highland, the 288 vehicles per day that are observed from an actual facility of the same size, a new report, or 2,000 a week, is a small percentage. Reevesdale gets a huge amount of traffic, right? So 2,000 a week is a small percentage of Reevesdale and also of Highland. But as you mentioned as well, you know, people put the address in their, in their app, you know, in their Waze, in their Google Maps, whatever they're using, you put 111 Highland Street into the GPS, from any point south where a lot of the employees are going to be coming from, any point east, some points north, even points west during some traffic times, it's going to send you up Safford Road. So 2,000 vehicles, net new 2,000 vehicles a week may not be a huge change for Reevesdale, but it is, it would be a massive change for our street, and it would completely overwhelm and devastate us. And so I think that's why we're, you know, we're so concerned, and we're encouraged to hear some of these suggestions, but I think we're also very concerned that, you know, we're coming up against brick walls whenever we try to suggest something. So, you know, the net impact, I think of 2,000 cars, and even if we get half of those, you know, that's a huge impact on a street that is narrower, at 20 feet wide than the driveway to the proposed facility, a street that doesn't have sidewalks. And on that, I really appreciate the comment on sidewalks, we kind of discussed this in the past, I dug into some of the, with some of the neighbors who've lived in the street longer, there apparently was a sidewalk on the left side, on the, you know, as you come up the hill, Sean, on the left side, halfway up the street, there was a sidewalk, but apparently in 2015, when the road was repaved, which also contributed to the cut-through, because now it's a perfectly smooth street shot down the hill and up the hill, that sidewalk was removed. So when we looked through a little bit, I talked to Chase Berkeley a little bit, and you know, he was saying, you know, the town does technically own 35 feet, it looks like, but if you look, and I know that the maps aren't exactly, you know, you'd have to dig out the old surveyor stuff, but the latest maps online, you can look at the street, the road is kind of straight, but the way the property lines go is a little bit of an angle. So when you start up the hill, it actually looks like my house at number 11 owns part of the street, you know, and, but then that starts to change as you go up the hill. And then by the top of the street, there's a little bit more on that side, and there's less on the other side. So, but at the very bottom, where the old sidewalk used to be, there was like 12 feet or so that the town supposedly owned. So there's a lot of messiness as to the property lines, and I think, like what Chase told us at one point, and even, I think he said it again at the last Traffic Commission meeting, is that a lot of these streets, the reason they don't have sidewalks is because it was hard to do. If it was feasible, we would have done it, you know, and the fact that Buckingham has it, Clifton has it, Martin has it, you know, and yours doesn't speaks to the fact that there are these, there are these challenges. So I think it should be on the table, of course, but I just wanted to give that context. So there's that, and I think on the, on the speed humps, like, you know, I think the, any of these measures, you know, I think when we had written and submitted to you guys in December and January to the planning board, we had talked about, you know, time of day do not enters, and this is something they've suggested, you know, because the whole point here is to, of that 2,000 net new cars, you know, we want to minimize that coming on our street, right? So--
Correct me if I'm wrong, the plan is of the 2,000 coming to none, the number, the acceptable number should be zero.
Correct, but we live next to Milton Hospital, and, you know, I think one of my neighbors is going to show how, on a daily basis, despite repeated letters from the hospital president to all of their vendors, to their ambulance providers, every day we get delivery trucks in the morning, every day we get ambulances, sometimes they get stuck and they learn their lesson. Part of the reason we don't get as many trucks, that 7:30 peak rush hour for employees and hospital employees and high school students, is because the trucks have learned that they get stuck. So even the garbage truck comes at 6:00 now, they don't come at 7:00 or 7:30, because they get stuck on the street. So like, we're just spreading traffic into the, you know, so I hear you, and they propose you on the left turn, all these things, but you're not going to control and compete with these apps where, you know, people are just going to go the fastest way. As long as it's the fastest way and there's no other restriction in place, I think we were living proof, we see this every day, Milton Hospital has a main entrance on Reevesdale, and traffic doesn't want to go back down onto Reevesdale, because it's faster for them to just bang a left and zoom right down Safford, rather than have to navigate the parking lot again. So that two minutes that they save is worth it for them. So unless, unless we put a restriction in of some kind, whether it's no trucks and we go through MassDOT and we do the no trucks, or it's through time of day do not enters, I think we feel that we won't achieve the zero impact that you're talking about in practice, in fact. And so I think that's why we're here, and the, there was a Route 28 corridor study done, which I know they looked at, and one of the recommend, you know, I think that was, is part of the whole, you know, there's some federal money out there with the infrastructure bill, there's some, you know, they're looking at redesigning the St. Elizabeth's Randolph Ave intersection to a rotary, and also one at Chickataw, but part of that whole thing, this Route 28 corridor study, but they looked at traffic along Safford and the ladder streets, and the average speeds are ridiculous, over 50 miles an hour, the number of accidents, given the stated speed limit, disproportionately high. So part of that is, and my neighbor here, Dan O'Neil, his wife got hit pretty badly as she was turning on and off, because people come flying and they don't stop, they don't look. So the two-way traffic turning on and off Safford during these peak times is a real safety issue. And so, and so again, not your fault, but if you're going to put in a facility that needs 7,500 employees, it's getting 2,000 cars a week, that's literally the top of our street, where the fastest way to get there is to drive up our street, it becomes a problem for us. So that's why I think we're really pushing for some balance of restrictions that everybody can live with. In that Route 28 corridor study, they do recommend, so they have short-term suggestions and long-term. Part of the short-term suggestions is time of day do not enters for non-residents on all streets on that corridor. So now, I don't know what's feasible, like you said, what's enforceable, I think Scott, you said what's enforceable, but in the report, which was, you know, it's like 450 pages, presumably done by experts, they're recommending not for non-residents do not enters, and I think that would be less disruptive to even say, because when we proposed a time of day do not enters to the police, you know, we went through the swipe board, we went, you know, it was presented to the Traffic Commission, they got opinions from the police, the fire, DBW, everyone was against it, the police said, we don't want to, you know, we're dealing with traffic too, our officers have to abide by any restrictions you put up, so if you put those time of days, then we're stuck, you know, so that risks, limits our freedom of movement. So I think for us, we would consider the police stations around the corner, they drive around the street every day, that they should be residents, right? Why shouldn't they be able to use the street? And they are obviously serving a very important public service, providing an important public service. So that's why I think, you know, the non-resident angle is, it may be more palatable, based on, based on prior street, you know, with the stakeholders involved, but I think, you know, we need to see one of those things, whether it's the speed humps. I actually think, I don't know Ned, if you agree, at the Traffic Commission, because you made the comment that these things weren't all well-received, which I agree with, I think Chase maybe responded a little better to the idea of a safety zone, and that, I guess is relatively new, but you're seeing it in Cambridge, you're seeing it in a few places where, if you're next to a school, if you're next to a hospital, and, you know, we don't have sidewalks and it's 20 feet wide and there's really no room, we're literally walking in people's lawns, and I couldn't find the video today, but if two trucks are on the street, one is going off-road to get around the other one, like literally going off-road onto somebody's lawn.
And the last thing you want to do is widen that road, because then it just makes people go faster and makes people more likely to go down.
Exactly. So the idea of a safety zone would be 20 miles an hour, because we have these unique conditions, we're next to a hospital. We actually get, and it's lovely, whenever I see nurses and hospital employees walking on our street, I applaud them, and I keep, I tell them, keep doing it, because we want to see more pedestrians and reclaim our road from the traffic. Now there's a risk, obviously, and we escort our children, because we don't want them to get hit, but, you know, the point being, pedestrians have a right to that 20 feet, just as much as the cars do, particularly with the state legislation that just passed protecting vulnerable road users. So a safety zone is another one, I think, should be on the table, where make it 20 miles an hour, but again, you come into the enforceability, you know, someone has to enforce that, whether it's a do not enter, whether it's a 20 mile an hour safety zone, but I think some combinations of these things would, would go a long way towards the minimizing that, like you said, that 2,000 cars don't use these streets at all. So if you're happy to have a dialogue, answer questions based on my experience living on the street, but I know others have a lot to say.
I was going to say, Liz, we do have other people who want to speak, and you've been wonderful. But I think this goes back to what Ned was saying, is that this really needs to be directed to the select board, I think a meeting with the select board and giving, now that we have this data, can inform and help with discussions with the Traffic Commission. But it, it needs to come from, I think the select board should be involved with this, it's a real serious issue for the residents of Safford Road. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Those are hands raised.
Yes, great, okay, good, yes, we, come in, then, yes, we'll take some people from--
Hello, my name's Teresa O'Brien, I live at 42 Safford. So everything we're talking about is all the cars, but what's going to happen, it's a two-year construction project. So I can tell you right now, I have three different schools. So when I go to high school, I look out my door, I say to my son, I'm like, which way should we go? Should we try to go down Highland, because you can see the cars, they're in front of my neighbor's house? So, but you can actually go to end of Safford, take a left, and get through that light quicker. So I know we're all talking about going straight, but if people turn up our street, it takes longer to go down Highland. So I don't think, like, I know it's a cut-through, but I can tell you, I'm like going past Cant Nav, I'm going up behind Town Hall to cut down other neighboring streets to get to the high school, which is quicker than going down Highland, which is right there. So, and I'm just concerned, once construction starts, I mean, you're talking about bringing the sewer and other things, it's going to be digging up Highland, construction, traffic's just going to be so much worse. So, and just so you know, I didn't want to bring this up, but on May 1st, someone did come out of the site, and I laughed, because I saw them when I was driving to high school, and I came up, and I saw the person, I drove right by them, they looked, to go down Highland, the traffic was too bad, they came up, went down Safford, right from the site, it was a construction worker, so it will happen, so.
Thank you very much. Yes, you know what, we do have some people who are on, do you want to, how many people do you have--
We have two hands raised, one of them specifically asked if they could speak now.
Yes, yes, then let's introduce that person, yeah.
Nadine Hannah, you've been--
Listen, they're going to hear us now.
Yes.
Hi, everyone, Nadine Hannah, 11 Safford Road, thank you again for having us tonight. I was hoping to screen share, and of course, no, I can't find it. Stay with me for a second. Otherwise, Josh actually has the pictures.
Josh, yeah.
Here we go, thanks, Josh. Okay, so speaking to the traffic, of course, that's our primary concern, and very specifically trucks, ambulance, commercial traffic--
She's here!
And my assistant is here, also Lana. Of course, the impact would have been greater to, you know, kind of click through one after the other, if I had the--
It's trucks!
Lana, I'm sorry. This is the current traffic that you catch on the picture, just when you get, you happen to see a vehicle passing, and you happen to get your phone out, and you happen to get the picture. You know, if you see a picture of trees, there's an ambulance or something else in the distance there.
It's a truck!
Exactly, there are ambulances and fire trucks. And you can see, you know, like the short amount of space that people have to walk in our street, with that. Okay. And also, I want to speak specifically to the fact that, again, this is the current traffic with, oh, you know, a high percentage of this traffic being attributed, oh, that's Highland showing you when it backed up to the hospital, and, you know, when, when the Northbridge group and Ned are saying, and also the traffic, that they're seeing this is going to be, in their opinion of the facts, low impact on the neighborhood, we're talking about, in this conversation, I think it was, what, seven to 15 employee trips, are we going to disregard the fact that a facility of this nature will need food services, linen services, office support, medical support, medical deliveries? What about like the oxygen, there's a tanker that came down Safford recently, pictures-- Oh, we want to pause on those afterwards, too, the pictures. Cleaning services, equipment, this facility is certainly going to add to the level of-- Daddy's going to be on the picture again soon-- --of commercial traffic, heavy-duty vehicle. Josh, if you can show up just a little bit to that orange truck, that's a picture of construction vehicles that were on Clifton last week at the Clifton-Hailand intersection, they were doing work, I don't remember the name of the street, but whatever Clifton would open up into at the top of Highland, it's basically an example of what it looks like on one of our ladder streets, when a project is being done on, you know, a street across the way. So if we were Safford and memory care, this is what this will look like if they end up putting any of those vehicles up on our street. If you go up a little bit again, please, you're going to find some more, oh, this engine is on the right, they turned off of Safford into the hospital, you can keep going up, please. Lana, you did a beautiful drive, honey. Okay, so these, these construction folks here, and the few pictures higher up were, yeah, that's exactly right, there were at least three different trucks with flatbeds that carried heavy-duty equipment up Safford around the corner, and ironically, to the hospital. There's a little, there's a little access road between the hospital and police properties. So, you know, here we go, we're talking about, we're going to control this by means of contracting communication, but we're still seeing existing hospital projects impacting our local neighborhood traffic.
How much I am--
And there were, there were a number of them, they came up and down a couple of times, they kind of, I think they had to actually circle the block before they found. Here we go on the picture with the white lattice, this is showing you the speed of Reevesdale, this car, I had just, this is at Reevesdale and Clifton, I was out walking with my daughter, who's, you know, here with me right now, that car jumped off the road and into these-- That car jumped off the road and into these people's front yard. That car is in their front yard. And there were, the white drop cloth you see in the foreground was a gentleman on a ladder painting. So moments before that, I had just done a loop, I was right there, this gentleman on the ladder was right there, and somehow nobody was hit and those people walked out of their car. But it's, it's just crazy, the, the way that people are driving through Reeddale and the ladder streets. I am rushing through this because of her. If you can go down to the bottom again for me, please. A separate issue that occurred, not with traffic, but with the knotweed, that irrigation, that sewer that you see, that is on the site right across from the opening of Stafford Road. And just slightly one up, I believe this is a picture of a vehicle that came through and trimmed the entire street line. It's not there, but that's okay. We don't know if it was town or hospital, Teresa has the picture. So they, we've talked about knotweed and how invasive it is, they came in, they clipped the entire, from Jean Irwin's house, past Stafford opening, past Teresa's house, probably along the Wells property, I'm not sure if they hit that or not, and they left all the knotweed there. We've talked about how invasive this is, and now it's inundating, flying around all over Weird traffic specifically, Bart hit a lot of the points, you know, a lot of people have talked about it, the, the traffic needs to be, we're already overwhelmed, we need to mitigate for Stafford before anything else. I appreciate so many of these ideas that we're having tonight that were being heard. I'll give you my, my only reason that I don't think sidewalk among all of the other things. I think it has to be traffic control more than just trying to remove the pedestrians, because the, the nature of these hills, the high water channels, the ice, et cetera, the current sidewalks on the ladder streets of Martin Buckleham and Clifton, they're in disrepair and we walk in the street anyway, you know. One of the videos that I couldn't play, which was in that slideshow, is actually a bard pushing our, our five year old in the carriage and an ambulance is coming, oncoming at night, and she's crying out, are we gonna get run over? You know, this is, this is what we're dealing with every day, in and out. And then speaking to the knotweed, just while we're talking about things that have to get, you know, implemented, I, I really strongly believe that the hospital contingent to getting this sale should, should have to have in place knotweed removals from all of that site. I know that Northbridge discussed doing it for, for the Highland site. I have, I'm on Stafford, a budding hospital property behind me, I think they should be forced to remove the, the, you know, hundreds and hundreds of feet of knotweed that are growing behind the Hill's house, Dan O'Neil's house, my house, and, and the Madera's house right down next to me. We're constantly fighting this battle, enough is enough on it, that we're now, we're gonna see it. It's bad enough when it's just us trying to prevent it, what's coming through the center line? But now we've got either the town or hospital employees coming through chopping it up and like letting it drift off to speed. Enough, enough is enough with this, we just can't handle anymore. And, and anything that you guys can do to help enforce that this development doesn't just kind of come in, the hospital makes money off the land sale, Northbridge makes money off of having the patience, they disregard the fact that they're gonna impact our, our neighborhood negatively, they want to diminish that, it's not right and it's not fair, the people who actually live here, the people who have to, want to enjoy the neighborhood, who want to be able to go around and see the neighbors and walk up and down the street, you know, not, not losing property fences, retaining walls, mature tree plantings, as old as my property to a sidewalk to benefit someone else's commercial investment. I don't think it's fair to ask people to do that. And I, and I appreciate the stuff that they have made so far, I just don't think it's enough.
Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say bye bye, bless you Lana.
Bye. Thank you. And you had one other person who's on the call?
We have two more hands raised.
Yep, who do we have here? Yes, if you'd like to join us and introduce yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you guys for facilitating discussion, thank you for the presentation, I thought it was very helpful to understand some of the traffic concerns. My name is Antonina Wells.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Before I started talking, Antonina Wells at one seven nine Highland Street. Some of you knew the force that was my mother and the, the traffic that, concerns that she had for the past twenty, thirty years. And she was a diligent note taker and note keeper, and, you know, I go back through her notes fifteen years ago, and it's the same sort of problem. And to, as people have mentioned, this is a preexisting problem, and before you can move forward with adding new traffic, I think the existing traffic has to be controlled and mitigated. I don't think that adding more traffic by any means is going to fix this problem. I think that, you know, this may be the, the push forward to sort of get going with this, but I think this is not a new concern of people who have recently lived here and noticed this, but also people who have lived here for decades. And with the implementation of the stop signs, I think, you know, I was hit coming out of my own driveway, at a person who blew a stop sign. And people go down the road, I know there's traffic study down and the, the miles per hour for traveling, I was hit going seventy miles, somebody's going seventy miles an hour, blew a stop sign, coming out of my own driveway. And it, it is concern for kids, not only on Highland Street, but on surrounding roads. You know, I, I, I feel for those kids that can't walk around their own neighborhood, bike around their own neighborhood. And it's, it's sad, you know, but I had a question about the Newburyport facility and how many trips, truck trips come out of that facility? Or the Newton facility? Do you know?
I don't really have it, I just don't have it.
Okay, well, my question was, when the trucks are making that churn, because these are semi trucks, I, I went to the Newburyport facility, I'm up there, and I, I happened to stop by the facility, and these trucks that are coming out there, they're not vans, they're semi trucks. So when they're turning from Highland Street into the facility, are they gonna be swinging onto the other side of traffic, sort of blocking traffic that way?
So we're continuing to look at the, at the truck analysis. You're right, they do have tractor trailers that are going to the site, but the, the trailer is much shorter than a typical, a typical trailer, so it's, so it actually turns tighter. But, but yeah, we're continuing to, to look at the analysis.
It will make sure, the way you design around that, it's, it's the size of the radius of the curve entering the driveway. So what we'll do is we'll make sure that those radii are big enough to accommodate that, that turn, so that they don't have to swing into opposing traffic in order to get to and from the side.
Sure. And then my other question, which I think was brought up, was, Nadine mentioned it about the, the, the concerns of Clifton then having the majority of the traffic. I think that's, you know, most likely what will happen. I think that the whole neighborhood is a cut through, I think it's a, frankly, dangerous place to drive and to walk. And it, to put the burden on, on residents after twenty, thirty years of trying to control traffic measures because of this project, maybe, you know, maybe now there'll be a solution. But I think driving all the traffic down one road is not feasible, I think it will create, you know.
No, I think we've come around to the notion that Clifton ought to be treated the same as the other. And the residents will have to deal with the fact that if it's, if that type of no entry isn't, is put in place, residents will have to deal with that. But all four of the streets, I think, we think should be treated the same.
Have you considered making any of those a one way road?
We haven't, that's certainly something that the town could evaluate as well.
Okay, that's, that's all the questions that I had, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yes, Jean, can you join us?
Sorry, can, just like I had asked if the fire chief was going to come in, would the other department heads come in to talk to us, to see if it would, would, what's the likelihood of them implementing some of these changes?
I think as we, as we progress, we may not be there yet, but.
Yeah, I think the goal is to think through these things right now, let's task them with sort of coming up with what the consensus approaches. I just mentioned to Scott, why, why can't we just cut these streets off that Reedville and just make them block off the end of the street? And turn them into.
One way, dead ends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cambridge does that, that's Cambridge's strategy.
Let's be honest, I mean, they were ladder streets at a different time, right? There were times when, when things were a lot calmer and a lot, I don't know if you would ever design them that way nowadays, where you'd put a smaller residential community off a main road with a cut through traffic like that. So I, what my role is, is to try to explore these different options and see what's tenable. And then to the extent that we all think it's a good idea, then we're just gonna have to figure out how to get it done.
Yeah.
But I think we've got to, there are things that we've got to make sure that the neighbors are, are good with, because whatever the change is, it's gonna represent a change to their lives every day. So if it's, if it's not a tenable solution for them, then it's probably not something we want to pursue. If, if they say, well, no, we, we need to get out under Reedville from our road, then then we say, okay, well, then we can't do that. Or if we need to get our, our trash picked up, or we need to get our kids, you know, picked up at, on our street instead of at the end of the street, then maybe we can't pursue those solutions, but I think we'll figure that out right now.
Yeah.
And maybe the hospital president, like if he can't, you know, solve the problems now, like why isn't he solving the problem? And I know we're getting off topic, but why isn't he solving these problems now? I wonder.
That's a discussion I think we'll, yeah, that I would like to hear, you know, updates on, but.
We are certainly urging the hospital.
Yeah.
To be a good neighbor.
Appropriate measures.
And there's a lot that can be learned from, I think, what the applicant is doing and putting forth as, as a, as a plan.
And what I've learned tonight is that the problem is massive, right? Which means that half hardened solutions aren't really gonna change it. This is not just having a project that can control what they do and can fix their issues, this is a, a problem that exists that spreads across all sorts of demographics and all sorts of points of origin. So it's really not gonna be an easy solution, and it's gonna, it's gonna have to, you know, take some work to, people are gonna have to maybe sacrifice a little bit here to get a big benefit there. But it's not, I don't know, I don't know if signage is gonna work, or just relying on people to do the right thing is gonna work. I'd like to see something more aggressive happen and.
That might be.
And that prevents people from getting from point A to point B.
Physically, yeah. Good. Okay, Jean, if you'd like to introduce yourself and welcome.
Jean, one twenty Highland Street. Thank you for this opportunity, welcome, Jim Floyd.
Thank you.
Having lived directly across the street for the past twenty years or so, I've learned a lot of things. My family and the neighbors were very instrumental in getting those signs posted on Randolph Ave, do not enter. We also fought like crazy to get the stop signs up, because the speed of the traffic was insane. And with Teresa O'Brien's house, for instance, there have been cars that go through her fence at the swings, that, that sort of thing before she got there. And several cars have gone off the road opposite my house into the woods, which are the wetlands. And if you were to go by my house today, you'll see the arbor baities in front of my house are all dead. And part of that is, I'd say because of all the salt they have to put down on those roads, because it's so hilly there. And a winter storm, I've tried to come home many times in front of the police station and up the hill, and I can't get there because someone doesn't have snow tires. And the whole thing's blocked, and then you say to yourself, okay, well, I go up Stafford, well, good luck with that, because the road's like this. And so when I look at the applicant's application, I'm also worried about the worst time for that traffic in that neighborhood is the snowstorms. When you have the snowbanks and you have the sidewalks, now the street isn't twenty feet wide anymore. Now you're talking about a sixteen foot wide street. And the memory clinic has really no plan for snow removal. If you look at the driveway coming in, it's about twenty-two feet wide, I guess, it's about seven hundred fifty feet long. And if you were a snowplow, to push all that snow straight in, okay, say in a two foot storm, seven hundred and fifty feet. If you had a snowbank ten feet deep, that would be a hundred and fifty feet high, a hundred and fifty feet high, fifteen stories high. Now they have to get that snow out of there. They should have had a proposal, which I haven't seen yet, because they denied that there was any fire department access issues up until just now, this is the first I'm hearing of, having complained for three years. Suddenly, it's, it's, it's an issue. I'm amazed, because I've been reassured over and over again that this was no issue. There have been several conversations with the fire department, well, now with the snow, does Milton have a snow farm? Where they gonna take all this snow? Where is it? Which direction do the trucks have to go? These trucks that will now be packed with snow are gonna be heavy as can be, going down icy roads in every direction. As I say, day one, myself, L O Wells, other neighbors were saying, this project doesn't have the infrastructure to be at this location. We're fine with a memory clinic, but this location is, is not conducive for a memory clinic, this says. So as I say, I'd like to add some snow calculations as to where these trucks are gonna go, how many of them are gonna be needed. And say a two foot storm, we've had plenty of storms bigger and accumulations more, but again, now the streets are all narrower. I remember a few years ago, we had those five feet of snow on the ground. Every street in my neighborhood was one lane, one lane. Now what do you do? And just a couple of weeks ago off the street, there was a fire going towards Randolph Ave on the left hand side. And just a small fire at a house, it, it was a nightmare. And I say, this, this neighborhood has already been over capacity for an awful long time. If the hospital wants to develop the land, prior to the rezoning, as, as a right, they were entitled to three houses. That was okay. Seventy some odd units is, is ridiculous, given the infrastructure issues there. Again, sidewalks, narrow streets, I mean, their room right away is, is, is bigger than the main street for the whole community. This, this is insanity. As, as we said day one, if they're, to ever do this, they should come through Winter Valley, where at least you got like a twenty-four foot wide street, you get sidewalks on both sides. The fire department has multiple accesses, you know, Winter Valley, they can come in off of Highland Street if they have to, or an emergency leave Highland Street right next to this property. But this property, I believe also they dug into the side of the hill just to keep the, the height of the building down, because if they exceed the height, then they have to have a, a real fire department access road. This way they can kind of squeeze in under, you know, one way is by keeping the height down. If they go up a little higher, they have to have a separate access road, which they can't do. So on, on the traffic issue, I just, I don't think there is an answer. I, I think there's, we're just trying to put, you know, fifty pounds in a five pound bag. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dean, thank you. Okay.
Two still hands raised.
Yes, all right, let's go to the, the audience, yeah.
Nanette Donovan.
Okay. Welcome, Nanette.
Thank you, I'm just looking to share my screen here. I know I should have permissions, but they're not coming up. Let's see here, this is a webinar, it's listed as a webinar tonight, it hasn't been in the past, is there a way you can give me, okay, there we go. Okay, so Josh, is this, I'm just gonna quickly see if I can share my screen, Josh, because I think it would look better. Is there a way you can give me permission as a co-host?
No.
No, okay. Or permission to share my screen?
The only way I can do that is if you make your hands.
Okay, so I'm gonna join as a panelist.
Okay, yes. All right, we're gonna make you a panelist, so you can share your screen that way. There, that's easier to say.
You've muted yourself.
Almost there, okay. So can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
And you can hear me, okay. Once again, I feel like we're getting towards the end of the evening when we're finally on, but I, I wanna just, I will, I will attempt to be as brief as possible. I wanna start off, my name is Nanette Donovan. I live at 16 Spafford Road in the big yellow house that you saw in a lot of Nadine's pictures there. And I wanna start by thanking Ned and the developers and, and really primarily the board. Because it's very clear to me tonight with the questions you've asked and the statements you've made, that you have really listened to us when we've spoken. And I can't tell you what a relief it is because we've been speaking about this for many years. And it, it just feels great that I, someone just used the term, there's a massive problem there. And that's exactly the case. So thank you for that. So I would like to also state that I am 100% in agreement that we have a problem. But I honestly still disagree that we have a handle on the scope of this program, problem. And I would implore you to slow down and make sure we have a handle on this traffic issue before we move one step forward with this development. Because the scale is actually still off. The numbers for the traffic that we have clearly demonstrate a problem. However, those numbers, we had a full study in a, in a July month when no one's here. We had an update in January. And anyone that lives on the street can tell you that there is a ton of traffic in the spring with the second semester seniors all driving. And in the springtime, which you don't see in January and you don't see in July, is every field in that Milton High School is full with, with games. So we've got multiple fields there. So a great increase in traffic on Canton Ave and going up Spafford in the spring. So that's not in our picture right now. And the other thing is, we're not taking into account, and it would be very short sighted for us to do so. Cuz let's face it, the site at North Bridge is not something we're doing because we're required to have it by law. We are now adding a new school down behind Canton Ave, as I understand it. So there's so much additional traffic there, potential large number of units on Canton Ave that are residential. Those needs to be incorporated into this study if we're gonna think of, of how we move ahead with this neighborhood or, or just going right out from the fire, fire into the frying pan. So I would ask that we stop and we consider this and we look at what happens in the springtime at Milton High School when there are more cars going over there with this development. And account for those additional vehicles. So the photos don't lie. So I'm gonna show you some more tonight, my little update since we last met. So clearly you are all to speed and thank you for seeing that our street's really narrow. There are no sidewalks on Spafford. It's highly populated with young families. We can't withstand any additional traffic burdens. And 288 trips a day, 2,000 a week that are proposed, that are part of this center, that's an addition that we can't bear. It's a big addition to us. So this is Highland at the corner of Spafford recently. All the pictures I'm gonna show you at the beginning of this slideshow, I took since we last had a presentation before the Traffic Commission, which was April. So these are like May and June pictures, recent. I put arrows here because I want you, this is where the site is. You're gonna, all these trees you see here, that's gonna be this big, new memory care center. The first arrow on the right of the screen, you can't see the car, but there's a bumper there. This is the top of Spafford. There's a car going through the stop sign and there's a car on Spafford here. And I'm here standing, I take these pictures when I'm out with my dog. I don't go out specifically to take them. And this car is so frustrated by taking the right on Highland there, it's gonna go ahead and take a left then. So this is why, this is what you'd see on Highland if you were there. But where the arrow is, is where we're proposing to put this new giant facility. So we're here just talking traffic tonight, so I'll get away from what it does to the peel and the change in character of the neighborhood for all of us that do walk here. But, but this is what you have on a given morning. This is the backup and there was nothing going on at the bottom of the street. There's no cop, there's no one directing traffic, there's no work being done there. You see emergency vehicles exiting, is that what that sign says? And you can actually see an ambulance there as part of the traffic. So this is all on, on Highland near where the proposed memory center, morning traffic. In order to, for you to see that this was outside of Milton Hospital, it's a little blurry for some reason. But you can see the backup of cars goes all the way down to Spafford. So this is where your big tractor trailer is gonna be taking a right or a left. And I just want us all to stop and really think about that. We, we, we can't add one more truck until we deal with this. And here's just another photograph to show you how narrow, while we do have a sidewalk on the right side, we do not on the left side. So this is where our memory care, I think, entered, pretty close to the entrance. There's that big old barn, I guess that is. So you can see that's pretty narrow. So there's a, maybe a truck or a minivan there and a pretty small Honda. And they can barely fit. So I don't think, I, I would disagree with the, with the statement that this is a de minimis impact on us here. One cars, too many. Here we have Highland at the corner of Spafford. Again, someone waiting at the top of Spafford and we've got one, two, three, four, five cars waiting. And this is to the right here where our site is. So we can all just kind of digest that and picture this huge building with all the employees coming in. Now, obviously, I draw a line, I don't take pictures of folks in their cars. The number of them, you're gonna just have to take my word, a number of them did have hospital badges on this particular morning. So this is actually today, this is my, this is this morning, coming back to my house. And you can see, this is what we've got. Even if this were a one-way street, which it's not, it's two-way. I'm trying to walk my dog and we've got two cars almost right behind one another, passing up our street on a normal morning. So again, all these are photos are in front of a home with a young child living there, over 20 minors just on Spafford. Bucking, Ham, Clifton and Martin all have a ton of young kids too. We've got newborns, we've got toddlers. And it's inadequate, these are these mini buses here. Just this morning, I couldn't, so many times I can't get my camera out quick enough that I don't get the picture. But just this morning, there was a, an ambulance and one of these, the ride on, on our street. So we've got no side sidewalks, there's just not enough space. And, and I believe from the comments today that you're quite well aware of that and I thank you. School buses, again, in, Bard had indicated, there have been things that they've looked at to try to mitigate measures on Spafford traffic, the impacts of traffic. And, and they've been unsuccessful in trying to do that. We have some problems here. So I'm glad we're looking at it, we gotta look at it before we do anything else. Cuz then in the winter, we've got this and we've got young kids here and we've got these big tractor trailers coming up our street. So this project itself has ambulances, the ride, uniform suppliers, food and beverage suppliers. The neighborhood, just as one of your members stated a few minutes ago, the neighborhood's been trying to work with the hospital, yet we still today, when I was texting Nadine about traffic, she said, oh, such and such just drove right by. For whatever reason, it's, it's not enforceable and it's not being done. And I know, we're, we're at the, the hospital's the lessor. I mean, I know there's a lot of, of different titles and, but at the end of the day, it's my understanding, the hospital's the nonprofit that owns the land is providing a lease. And, and we can't get that under control. So we've gotta just put a big hold on everything until we deal with that. So here's the photograph of what an ambulance and a, you know, the trucks and cars going down Spafford. That's just not, not truthful that that's not going to happen because it, it does. And here's Nadine, so, out on a walk, kicking your child down this street or your kid biking. And I, and I thank you cuz I, I think you all have. So this is all without the services needed for the new facility. We have specifically seen and see regularly crown uniform trucks, that's right going down Spafford. Airgas was another one recent, a big truck like that, that is not a picture of on Spafford Road, but it's similar to what was on there. I think Treats can testify to when that was there, if you want that testimony. Another one, Genesis Logistics that comes up and down. So these are big trucks, so that's a drug sample delivery solutions. So we have a problem at the intersection of Highland and Spafford, we cannot add to it. These are some older pictures. We've been trying to deal with this for years. It was suggested we deal with it by parking on the street. You know, we get mirrors clipped. But this one last thing that is really important, in addition to us now all knowing we have a massive problem, we know we don't have the answer right now. I think we've all come to that conclusion tonight. But there was something else that's pretty important and that is, big part of this project was based upon this not bringing traffic to our community at town meeting. And I'm not an expert in this, I'm just trying to figure it out as a layperson living on the street. But this whole process started, we're here because at town meeting, someone said this minimal traffic impact. And Art stood up and said, in a week it might be as much as 150 cars a day. And it was in that process, it was stated a multitude of times to Bard. That's an exaggeration. It was stated to him that those are vastly, vastly exaggerated numbers. I mean, that's a, might not be the exact quote Bard might remember. But he was, and then the response was, these individuals don't drive. But, and so that vote passed by 16 votes. And it was based on faulty information. We now find out that it's 288 trips a day. How would that vote been different if, if that figure had been proposed? As opposed to much less than 150 a day? So to the extent that the town meeting members relied to their detriment on those facts, if that is a legal reason to go back to that, I would urge you to do that. Because this is changing, it's, it's a taking of, of our neighborhood and a change that's irreparable, huh? We can't get this back once you put this big two-story, 78-bed facility here. I mean, the beauty of our neighborhood, the wetlands and, and all of these impacts, it, it's over once you do that. So I know we need to slow down, we're here to talk about traffic tonight, but traffic's hugely important. And, and this passage of, of zoning and whatever the change was, was improperly based upon a traffic estimate which was very, very low. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening and thank you for all you do to address our concerns.
Thank you, Nanette, that's great, okay. And I think that was our last speaker, is that correct, the citizens?
Uh, we had Jack Irwin with his hand raised.
Okay. Jack, we can welcome you and we need to wrap it up in just a minute or two, so.
Oh yeah, that's absolutely fine, can you guys hear me?
Yes, and if you could introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, I'm Jack Irwin, I live at 120 Highland Street. I am at the corner of Spafford and Highland, I'm the home with the stone wall around it, right across from where the site is proposed. I had just sent everybody on the playing board an email, including the photos from the, the fire that my father had mentioned of Y 90 Highland Street. As you can see, the, the wells at 179 Highland Street was, was greatly impacted. As there's driveway was blocked in by fire trucks and police panel. And there was a lot of, it was also, there was also a lot of traffic being redirected. And by the way, just a huge shout out to Milton Fire and Milton Police, they were heroic that night. We also noticed that the, that the neighbors were, were evacuated from their homes because of this fire. This really brought, this really brought up concerns for me, you know, what if there's a fire or some sort of emergency at this proposed memory care clinic? What are the impacts on the traffic on our street? That's what I am just really concerned about because there were four, about at least four trucks for this small home fire, about 1,800 square foot home. What about a 59,000 square foot unit building? I mean, sorry, square foot building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. So I think that was it, no one else on the, no hands raised in the audience, okay. Okay. All right, thank you. So if there are any other comments, I don't know if there, anything else that anyone would like to ask, any questions as well? Yes. Sure, okay, please, welcome. And we do have to move on to our agenda shortly, so.
A managing Spafford Road resident.
Okay. And if you could just state your.
Grab the mic.
Welcome, and if you could state your name and address.
I'm also the person who said traffic is not going to be a problem. My name is Jack Foley.
Great.
July 1st, I'll be in my house at 33 Spafford Road for 47 years. I have examined, I have two points, I have a point to talk about the memory unit. But all this stuff about the traffic really doesn't have anything to do with the memory unit. I have reviewed the data on the traffic information. I have one year of civil engineering, it doesn't qualify me for anything, but I can read data. I'm a management consultant, I can read. If you wanna say 288 trips, that's a trip in and trip out, so that's 144 people are going someplace to and from. Are all 288 trips gonna be down Spafford Road? Does anybody go down Canton to, to settle? All sorts of things have been said which are untrue. And I have a relative, a dear friend of mine, my mother-in-law, no jokes, it's like having a second mother. I loved her, she even lived in my house for two years. She lived in the Hellenic Center in Canton for five or six years, died in 2010. I spent a lot of time there, the hospice unit that was developed there asked me and my wife if we would join the hospice unit to, to enlighten some people as they come in and leave their loved one in this institution. I know what goes on in there. My mother-in-law, which I told you was considered to be a second mother to me, I'm, I'm just gonna take a wild guess that most of you people have a mother or had a mother, have a sister, have a daughter possibly, because men generally don't make it to these places. We die first, we'd rather not go. The number of people who come to, so, to make sure that I had current information, I went down to Hellenic Center a couple of weeks ago. I would ask that if, has anybody who's been complaining about traffic about a. about a memory unit, has even seen a memory unit, been in it, experienced it. If you think saints work in the hospital, you ought to see the saints who work with these people. Because boy, when you get stuck in a memory unit, you become honorary. You also lose the person who supports you the most, their name. So let me say, back up and just say, to put myself in a proper position. I am here as a resident and a citizen of the town of Milton for a long time. And before the 47 years, I lived on Ridgewood Road. I am here as my own self. I do not represent the hospital, which I've spent a lot of time at with my therapy dogs. One of whom, if you've ever been in the hospital, you might have seen him and me, especially if you were there on a Thursday where we do rounds. I am not speaking as a hospital representative. I have not asked any information of a hospital representative. I've asked him questions and he can verify or not that I asked him questions and I told him beforehand, I only want an answer, not a position paper on my question. I did that for several other sources, including the senior administrator of the Hellenic Center. That place has had to double. Not that this is a selling point, but they have a huge organization. They just switched, they didn't expand the building. They've switched over another unit to a memory unit because there's so much need for it. In Hellenics, the Hellenic Center is no longer just Greek, but they follow the Greek tradition of honoring their relatives. This is important, ladies and gentlemen. I brought some stuff along to validate this in my original position here. Data, usually dementia, which is a, uh, one of many, uh, one of the many things of dementia, area talks about Alzheimer's, usually after 65, which is mostly just me in this room. But it can come early. You might make 65.
We've got a few years beyond that.
You just jump over the threshold.
We, we really need to just, I'm sorry, if you could just keep it brief, we really, um.
I, I let all these other people.
Absolutely, yes.
Go on and on and on.
Yes.
This last one who said she was going to take just a few minutes, those pictures are wrong.
So we're trying to stay with traffic.
I walked to the hospital with my dog.
Right. We can just keep comments to traffic, yeah.
She said that, to go into the hospital, the picture shows all the cars going straight beyond the entrance to the hospital.
I saw her walking her dog that day when she took those pictures. Those were accurate.
It happens. The fire, yeah, it happens. Every place has a fire. People drive off the road everywhere. I'm sorry, but you could get Alzheimer's as early as 30. No, not, not often, but it does go down from 65 to capture most of the people in this room. I certainly qualify. I'm older than most of the trees on the street. Even children can get some of the symptoms. So I'm here to say that I have examined the data and unless they plagiarize the entire thing, which I made my own estimate long before, and I recorded on that when I first stood before this board, some board, that, uh, people don't come and visit these people very often. Do you want to go visit somebody that doesn't even remember your name and you're their prized child?
My old man's in the Newburyport facility.
Okay, you bet the one. Yeah. How many people were there?
Not a lot.
Not a lot. My dog and myself and my wife visited my mother-in-law. There'll be one man visiting his wife every day for lunch. And that's it. So where is the 288? I thought it was high, based on my survey of the things. The, the Hellenic Center in Canton is further off of the road because the first 50, 60, 70 feet is separated with a creek that goes along there. It's another 100 feet. But all around this property are homes who all contribute, who all support this organization. I'm here to say that this is a worthwhile thing for the town of Milton. Make it happen. Demonstrate to ourselves and to the world that we give a damn. Do you go to, is it your father you said? Do you visit him once in a while?
About once a week, if I'm lucky.
That's fine. Most people do it once a year.
I know.
Father's Day, Mother's Day. You do have other responsibilities, your own family, but you do want it. So I have received questions. I've, I've questioned and I've reviewed some of the tapes and tried to see all the things that people have talked about. And I am stumped. This is known as the prestigious hospital area. How is it so prestigious? When you look outside here, we've had it for years. Looks like a tumbleweed, bunch of falling down buildings. The thing that was right beside the roadway was an Irish guy's first farm. Guess what the name Foley is? It's not German, let me tell you. What do I care about that place? It has no historical value and yet some boards were trying to have, force the hospital to spend money to refurbish that thing to back where it was versus taking care of patients. I myself volunteer with my dog for 12 years before he just died two weeks ago. I now have his actual nephew. I'm going around trying to help people and I ask you to look at this and do something favorable. I don't see the traffic as a problem. I am, I sit on this, on the same street as everybody else has. But I would ask that you take a look at, number one, traffic exists and is growing everywhere. Unless you belong to a city that has 50 persons in it or less, you're going to have traffic. It has taken me 20 minutes to get out of Milton, trying to find some way to get out. Uh, the second thing is, when you're trying to get a resolution to the traffic law, I like fewer cars, but everywhere is growing. The thing is.
Thank you. Can you just, one more comment and then, then we do need, we have other items on the agenda. So I, I apologize if.
I apologize too, but this is.
Thank you, and I, we hear what you're saying, yes.
I will wrap up then and say.
Thank you.
I find this to be a worthwhile situation. And I think that there are ways to solve some of the, oh, so back to the thing. Before you try to resolve some of this stuff, find out how we got to this problem. There are reasons why. I've got an old traffic report 30, 40 years ago. We had lots of traffic coming down Highland. The solutions here sometimes cause the problem that you have now. You have the treat, the street light at the Highland and Canton. When you didn't, you wouldn't have convoys of cars if you didn't have the traffic light. I agree with the traffic light, but that's what you're going to get. It's a convoy, a whole bunch of cars go on down at the same times. The last thing is, when you're trying to get a solution for the neighbors, picture it's for all neighbors. Some people on the street, especially the younger ones, are going off to work. The ones who work, moms, I'm not saying anything against, but a lot of people go off to work. They're off in the morning and they're back in the evening. The rest of us go in and out several times a day. So a suggestion by the police chief to park the car on the streets will slow it up. I now have to go in and out, weave in and out. So that's what I'm just saying about, and you mentioned something, sir, earlier, it's long ago. It's not a solution, you have to make sure the solution is for all people.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, okay.
Do you have one more hand, maybe a half, guys raised your hand once again? I don't know.
You know what? Yeah, we really do need to move on. I apologize to Nadine. We are, we really do need to move on and, um, please, Nadine, I always want to hear from you. But if you could just email any of the comments, um, please feel free and we'll circulate that throughout the board, so. So we do need to close because we have other items to get to tonight. So we would like to move our, continue the public hearing. Do you have a date in mind? We have, when you think you might be prepared, we, um.
Probably your first meeting in July.
First meeting in July, which is the 13th of July. So that sounds good. If I could have a motion to continue the public hearing for 111 Highland Street to July 13th.
I'll make a motion to continue till July 13th.
You could also add a time certain.
And a time certain.
7:05.
At 7:05, terrific. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you and thank you to all the work that everyone's doing on this, so, great. Thank you very much. Okay, good night, good night. Okay, appreciate Sean, everything you're doing, so, it's been great. So I do have some others, so I will, yeah, maybe reach out, okay.
Can you come to every meeting?
Yeah.
Can you just be here for every meeting? That'd be great.
I, I am, like, I, this is my fourth one this week.
I know.
It's all good.
Yeah.
I'll do what I can.
No, I'm just kidding. You were great, it was great to have you here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
All right. Great, so moving on, we have.
Can I make a comment before we move on? And I, there wasn't an appropriate time to correct this speaker named Minette.
Minette.
But Minette indicated or criticized the planning board for starting this business late again, was her expression.
I think she did.
That's not accurate at all. We were on this topic probably before 7:30. You know, all we had prior to this was 1,200 Brush Hill Road. I thought we went through it pretty quickly, so for the record. And if Minette is still watching, which she may not be, I thought her, her accusation of a late start was not correct.
She might have come on later, yeah, I don't know. So, good, thank you so much for that comment.
We have the power to limit public comment if you want us to time and call out.
Yeah.
We may have to do that, two minutes, five minutes, and literally have a timer. And it dings, and then we have to cut them off.
Yeah. Well, I, I do, I did want to hear, I wanted the neighbors to be able to speak and be heard and, um, but when we have this many, yeah.
Is there any way to get a feel of how many we're going to have? Or you can just tell by reading the room?
You can tell what's on the screen and then, yeah. You know what I, we can do is we can actually poll the audience to see who wants to speak before and then.
And limit it to two minutes instead of five if there's too many?
Yeah, or even three minutes, but I, um, but this was very good. I think it's been constructive. I think the conversation with the neighbors, um, you know, we closed the public hearing now, so I, you know, I don't want to say anything without them being here. But the dialogue and I, I feel like we're, I think hopefully the neighborhood will feel like they're better off, um, having had this process, so. So moving forward, um, we do have an A and R, uh, 515 Blue Hills Parkway. Josh, if you want to just comment on this.
Yep, hopefully this is much less controversial. I'll just pull it up for your benefit. I don't know if the applicant or any of them on their team, it looks like we might have Bonnie Tan from their, uh, team here to speak to it.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tan, representing the client on this property. This currently is a single parcel with a single family right there. But, um, our engineer found out that years ago it was two legal parcel and the previous owner was combining to build a single family. And we found out that it's still a party zoning code, it's still a legal parcel. So we would like to file an A and R to subdivide this parcel. So the proposed two single family will be by right that we're proposing. We don't have any layout yet. But, um, we will not require any zoning relief for the new structure. But we'll require conservation.
Yes. Great, so is that, you sort of, we lost you, we could hardly hear you at the end. Was that everything?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great.
So, yes, Tim and I have reviewed this N R. The, it's a 4,000-foot square foot lot. The plan is to divide it into two, 2,000, which is allowed by the residence district that they're in. So they would be by right and in compliance, so it don't have to be treated as a subdivision process.
So pretty straightforward, any questions?
They meet the frontage.
Yep, they do. So it's entirely zone compliant, Tim also reviewed it and gave them his thumbs up.
Great. And, um, yeah, it's interesting, the wetlands that it approaches, I'm sure they're clearly aware of those.
Yes, we are and we will be filing an R.
Yeah. That wouldn't be our jurisdiction, but just so.
Yeah.
You're aware, so.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, if there are no other questions, um, if there is a motion to accept the, yeah, did you have something? Oh, sorry.
No.
You were speaking, okay.
We'd like to attempt at making a motion to accept this proposal.
To accept the proposal.
Split lot, was it 515?
515 Blue Hills Parkway, yes.
Two lots.
And allow two.
And allow Tim to sign.
Can I, can I make a comment? I, I just want to, I, uh, it's a question. Josh, when we look at, um, the two plans that were provided, the existing plot plan and the, uh, I guess it's the proposed plan of land, right? Do you have that open?
Uh, yes, I can, I can, sure.
That's okay, that's okay. Just, um, I just want to get squared away on the square footage. What is the size of the lot?
So the, the current lot is a 4,000 square foot lot.
Forty, forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Okay.
My apologies if I missed.
Okay, all right, I heard four earlier.
That's what I did too, because I saw forty, twenty, twenty, yeah.
That was it.
Forty thousand square foot with a 200-foot frontage.
Okay.
The total is 2, 20,000.
Understood, okay, that was all, I'm good.
Thanks for.
Great, that's great. And so is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. It's submitted. And authorizing Tim to sign, that was great. Always keeping that in mind. Okay, so next, moving on. We have the discussion to vote on the Mass Trails grant matching funds. Josh, if you would like to.
Sure.
Talk for a moment about this?
Uh, so in 2022, our planning department, my predecessor, applied for a grant from the Mass Trails program for a study of the Bridge One of three bridges crossing the Ponsett behind 88 Whorf Street, a former MBTA rail bridge, to see what structural repairs it requires and how it could be potentially converted to a pedestrian bridge connecting the Milton Riverwalk to Ventura Park. Time Bond completed that analysis, found it to be quite feasible. Tim and I are moving forward with conversations with the city of Boston to talk about cost sharing and next steps. But as part of that grant process, we committed to a 20% matching fund. Either it's typically paid by the department or the planning board, whoever is funding these studies, or through staff time. We proposed, or my predecessor proposed that it would be staff time. Time Bond did not need us to provide very much staff support for their analysis. So we were not able to meet that 20% by staff time alone, which is why Tim and I are requesting that we be authorized to spend $8,000 of fiscal '23 budget to fill in the remainder of what we've filled with staff time, but there is still a deficit.
And there's a chance it could be less than 8,000, so up to.
Up to 1,000.
Yeah.
There's.
That gives a little bit of a buffer depending on what the state says, right? Okay.
So I have a question for clarification. So the town of Milton does not own this bridge, do we?
This is still under the jurisdiction of the MBTA. But the town of Milton has a significant interest in it and when we provide a special permit in. And when we provided a special permit in 2002 for 88 Wharf, this was proposed as a sort of town of Milton interest project.
So, yeah, so that's what my concern is, why are we investing resources that we might not have into something that we don't own? Why would we pay to fix a bridge if we don't own it?
Especially where there's a bridge, two bridges north of it that works just fine for the bike trail, right?
So the Nipponset Greenway does cross the river there. That is not very accessible from the Riverwalk. You have to cross the tracks at Milton Station, which is why when this was proposed to the previous planning board, it was supported as a grant application. There is an interest, as there was in 2002, to see this be utilized as an important connector to our natural resources and to those available in Ventura Park. So we have a prevailing interest and the MBTA is not--
So we did, we have already gotten the matching funds. It was voted on--
Right. So that was my confusion. So I fully support the understanding of it and I voted for it, but I didn't quite realize that we didn't own it. I'm not sure. I missed that.
So I understand your question. I have similar concerns, but I think tonight we're being asked to honor an obligation we have. That's, that's the first topic.
Yeah.
Right? We have an obligation to contribute to funding. We thought we could accomplish it with people hours. We can't accomplish it with people hours. So the ask of the planning board now is, would you, would you allow us, you know, will we approve this payment? I agree with where I think both you and Jim are going, because when I read this information with respect to the cost of 1.2 million to 2.3 million or whatever it is, I think that's for another discussion. But at least for the time being, I think you're, you have a specific ask.
Yes. Yeah. The merits of the project at large are somewhat different than they asked before.
Correct.
Yeah, and you're right. That's what the cost was a little startling.
And that would not be the town of Milton. That would not be our town funding that.
Seems to me there'd be a share.
And likely it would be a grant process. So our, I can't guarantee that this is the path we would go down, but we would likely seek state grant funding to repair this. We know that Milton teens and children already use this bridge and jump in, are, as we now know from other reports, are PCB contaminated water. So it's just in the interests of the town to repair this.
And to clean up the-- Yeah.
Kids actually swim there?
We, we've received a number of calls from residents at 88 Wharf that people are using it as a bridge to jump off of. So maybe it's safe, preventing that pack rust from also contributing to tetanus even before they jump off the bridge.
When they hit the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number, a number of concerns that we want to make sure this is safe and as valuable a resource as possible instead of an ice war and the danger.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, please.
What is our budget?
We currently, we've only spent 10,000 out of, is it 50?
Fifty is--
Fifty is our--
Your question last--
Yeah. So we have $40,000 that we have not spent.
Okay.
And it's June is our--
No, I'm not saying--
--school year.
I'm just wondering what our budget is and how that--
Yeah, so we have plenty of money. So there's plenty of money in the budget. And actually, when Tim is here, we can talk about sort of next year, how we really take advantage of having that allotment, that $50,000. And a lot of it will go towards consultants. We're, with the recodification--
That's what I was thinking.
--the East Milton overlay zoning, we're going to need to hire attorneys to write the zoning for that. So I think next year will be an easier year. We just didn't have as much, we got a lot of grant funding for the things that we were doing, which is a good thing.
No, it's great. So does our budget roll or do we have to spend it by June?
We, we need to spend it by June, so.
It's the whole thing where we don't get it again or?
No. It's, we've already, we, town meeting already voted for our, for next year's budget, so. But as of last year, we will not have spent all of our funds.
No, it's a good thing. I don't have a problem.
Yeah. So if our funds aren't spent, it just goes back to the general fund.
That's great.
And it could be allocated somewhere else.
Yes. And sometimes if there is an invoice, you can pay that invoice through, I think it's through July that the town is allowed to pay an invoice. So if we do have something in the works, we can get that invoice, have that paid out of our, our previous year's budget. But you're limited in time on when you can do that.
Okay. All good.
The invoice was in the previous school year.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. So, so can I have a motion to approve the supplemental funding from our budget, our fiscal year budget, to cover the costs up to, up to 8,000?
Likely.
With the understanding is that it, it will be less.
I would make a motion to authorize a maximum amount of $8,000 of the fiscal year '23 budget for the purpose of--
Match funds.
For the matching funds for the--
Nipponset Bridge.
For the Nipponset Bridge, as requested by, by Tim Chiewinski.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye. And just before we move on, what was interesting in this report, I didn't want to distract from our conversation, but one thing, and this is going to be really relevant to the MBTA community discussion, but on page four of the report, which I'm sure you read through this--
Yes.
Is I was sort of quite alarmed by the Bridge One, Two, and Three are, they're separate. One is a bike trail, one is, you know, not being used, and the other is an MBTA, the existing trolley line. But the, all three bridges are supported on common abutments. The East Abutment is, continues across all three structures, and the West Abutment has several jogs along the river. The abutments are in satisfactory overall condition. However, when you look at, at each bridge, the stringer bearing sits on concrete pedestals above the abutment bridge seats, while the girder bearings are supported directly on the, on the abutment bridge seats. What it goes on further to say, where there's abutment, the stringer pedestals exhibit moderate to severe deterioration, with the pedestal at the West Abutment in worse condition than the East Abutment. Cracking and spaling, spalling was observed at each pedestal. It goes on to say, "The stringer bearings were photographed but inaccessible for inspection. The girder bearings assemblies exhibited severe deterioration," there's photographs to support this, "with about 50% section loss to the lower supporting elements and total loss of anchor bolts." So this is what our MBTA trolley is, is running over. The tracks, steel run, running rails and timbers, that, you know, those had, those have been neglected because that's, that's a track that doesn't run. But the bearings and the, and the support underneath our, our existing trolley lines are in hor, you know, the bolts, total loss of anchor bolts. I'm not an engineer, but this would trigger something that I think this report and this engineering and the photographs should be sent to the MBTA. We know the staircase deterioration for going on 20 years. We know that there's a plan to do over the trolley line, but this is, this is, I think this is something that we should report. And if we have this information, I would like, I haven't had a chance to talk to Tim about this since I read this, but I was really shocked and I think we have an obligation just to, to let the select board know. They've already written, there's a lawsuit being filed with the stairwell. If, if, if this is something that's, that we are, that we have information and we're aware of, I think it goes to the discussion on the MBTA on, on what we're being asked to do for, for a, for a product of a trolley line that, and again, I don't want to get ahead of our MBTA discussion, but it's, it's very concerning. So thank you for--
Absolutely. And I'm happy to pass it to Tim.
That's great.
We should, again, send it up to the MBTA. Just like with our dredging analysis, we found those PCB contaminants that are--
Exactly.
--real EPA and super big concern.
Yeah.
So, you know, getting this data, we, we know the state of infrastructure throughout the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
It's not where we want to be.
Yeah.
And the MBTA, system-wide, we want--
And it was built in 1917. So, I mean, it's, yeah. But, and it might be something that they just, there looked like there had been some patches to some concrete, but this apparently has not been dealt with. So I think it's important before we do further, you know, we try to increase our rider, you know, our ridership and we're looking at things that it's safe, so.
Totally agree. I support that, too.
And the select board, too.
And the select board, yeah. We should just share this report just so they are aware.
Yeah. The, the select board, or at least the town administrator, has been--
Yes.
--kept well informed of this.
Okay.
No, I've kayaked under there and looked up, and the nicest structure is that one house that's three condos. That's all insulated and well taken care of underneath. Everything else is a mess under there.
Really?
Yeah. It's deep water, too. It's really weird.
Yeah.
It's just deeper than the rest of it, but it's just, yeah, it's bad.
Right. Good. So this, that may be one good thing that came out of this report. So, thank you. So moving on now to old business, we can now talk about MBTA communities, update on consultant work, discussion of upcoming public forums. And Josh, if you want to open that up, that, that's great.
Yes. So on, in terms of the consultant work, there are sort of two elements to that, the technical assistance that we're receiving from UTIL and MIPC, which is continuing. We haven't received anything new since we last met from them, but we are expecting some additional materials to come in before the forum on the 15th.
Right.
Once we receive those, those will obviously be shared out. The other side of the consultant work is the impact analysis, the fiscal impact. We sent those to three firms. We've received one response thus far. The deadline is tomorrow. That was from RKG Associates. So we have at least one response, which is good. I know some of our peer communities present out similar requests, not receive any response. So we have at least one bidder, which is compelling, and that will be opened on Monday. Or others will be opened if we receive others before the end date. And Tim will get started with deciding on that bid. Because of the scale of it, we are obligated to go with the lowest bidder. There's not that same non-price, price sort of review as we did with the initial process. One request we've had from UTIL, which is not necessarily, the board doesn't have to vote on this, is that their technical assistance through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership is capped at $20,000 worth of technical assistance. They are, much like our staff time under that, in terms of the help they've given us by the end of this fiscal year. So they will be discussing with MHP, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, a way to extend that beyond the end of the fiscal year, which has been positively received when they've done that for other communities. So we should have some additional buffer time for UTIL technical support into July and then potentially August. So we'll get, we'll be slightly less constrained, which is reassuring.
Good.
Subject to MHP's approval. We have our public forum on Thursday the 15th.
And there was an ad in the Milton Times I did see today.
Yeah.
So that's great.
It's on all our socials, which, you know, are not the most influencer-y, but Twitter and Facebook on the town website. It was in the Council on Aging's newsletter that goes out to about 1,500 recipients. Physical flyers replaced in the Council on Aging and in the library. And our MBTA Communities email list, which goes out to now 79 recipients, was also informed about this. So we've tried to really get the word out, just as we did with the last meeting, which, I don't know, some of you were there, was quite well attended. And we will be presenting what new information we've gotten from UTIL and MIPC with regards to their compliance modeling. We'll also be sharing the results from the surveys that we've been sending out. After the last meeting, the last public community information session, we added an additional five questions to that survey. That included if your property was rezoned, would you be interested in redeveloping, questions with regards to the fiscal impact analysis, which sort of are the highest concerns by residents, traffic and schools. So far, we haven't had as much participation in the second half of the survey as previously, but so far, traffic and schools are the highest concern. 75% of people also said they would not be interested in redeveloping. So that can also help lay some concerns over the sort of pace of how this buy right would be.
Where are you, how are you advertising this, the survey?
So that has also been on our MBTA Communities webpage--
Okay.
--for several months.
Great.
It has been advertised at each of our community meetings.
Great.
And in all of our public communications about our information sessions, it's been hyperlinked to in those.
Great.
So we, though we've had a shorter amount of time for this second set of questions, we've had over 200 responses to the survey.
Good.
We also put QR codes for it in a number of places, at Shields Park, at every Mattapan Trolley Stop, and in businesses along Central Ave. Coffee break, and I think, oh, I haven't updated them. So we--
Can I ask you a question, Josh? You said 75% of those that responded to the surveys said that they would not be interested in redeveloping their property. Is that, is that right?
Yes. But it's, I, I'd struggle to say that that's a super representative proportion because it's been only a month since we put out the second time.
That's okay. It's a sample. And, you know, as I, as I hear that statistic, that tells me that 75% of the people would not be in favor of it. Obviously, if you weren't in favor of redeveloping your property, you're probably not in favor of having any of the property around you redeveloped. That's a conclusion I would take away from that. I'm not actually going to comment on it. It just, it's a logical conclusion for me, but it's good information to have.
Yeah. That's good.
And, and on, when people are taking the survey, do you, can you review who was responding? Do you see their email addresses?
The responses are anonymized.
Yeah.
So I can't tie an email address to someone's responses. So if you had lots of inflammatory remarks, I will not track them down.
Yeah.
You're all set, Maggie.
Or if you're the same person taking it two or three times, that doesn't show up either, right?
No. So we, we've kept it as open as possible, especially because we've asked people who've already submitted a response to consider re-filling out the, the new section of the survey. They're on two separate pages, so it'd be, it's easy to tell what is what you previously submitted or not. So you can submit as many times as you like. We like to trust our residents. So we're not worried about it.
That's great.
I, so the RFP that was issued, what was the timing of, so this, this, the respondent was RKG Associates. That's the respondent we have so far. What's the timeframe if Tim were to release them and award this study to them? How long do we expect that we're giving them for the preparation of the financial analysis?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head. I believe in past conversations, it looked like about three months, but I, I would have to pull up--
That's what I recall on the timeline, roughly.
Was that what it was, three months?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I did, you know, and you, I don't know, Josh, if Tim would have given to you, but back in January, I sent a financial analysis, a, probably a pretty simple format that Rick Neely had provided some help in, in putting together. And I had sent that along to the select board and to the town administrator. I then followed by sending it to Tim to make him aware. I submitted it not as a planning board member, but as a residence, as a resident of the town. And at that time, I asked our town administrator and the select board, as the executives responsible for the fiduciary future of the town, to, to act. And so, I didn't hear back from anyone. And recently, about two weeks ago, I reached out to our town administrator to ask him what progress he had made on this. Our town administrator did reply back to me at one point last week, and he said he'd be available to talk if, if I preferred to do that, and that he was waiting for the consultant that Tim had reached out to. So, I offered Nick last Thursday, and I haven't heard back from him since then, but I will continue to try to have a conversation with him. So, one of the things that I think is really important, I intend to, to, to mention this to Nick when I speak with him, whatever presentation is being made, whether it's by the planning board or your department, whether it's Tim, it needs to be an objective presentation. And from the Council on Aging, and I wish Tim was here with us tonight, but I will speak with Tim the next time, but from the presentation on the Council on Aging, as I sat in the audience, it wasn't an objective perspective that was presented by Tim. He favors density. He suggests that we really don't have a choice. We absolutely do have a choice. He suggested that if there were, if there were a, if, if there was a litigious nature to it, that it could be very costly for the town. We shouldn't frighten anybody into a point of view and a position. And I just want to make sure that as, you know, certainly as a board, and certainly as our staff for community, for, for Community Housing and Development, that we're not conditioning anyone to be afraid of the outcome. The reality of it is, we're not required to do this. If we were required to do it, we wouldn't be going to town meeting for a vote. So, we have a choice. And I think we have to continue to tell the residents, we have a choice. This is an option. And if it wasn't optional, as I said, there wouldn't be a vote by town meeting, and there also wouldn't be a structure where you're penalized if you don't comply. When we do talk about the value of funding that the town would forego, I do want, the next time the presentation occurs, to be accurately describe what funding we have received over the last 10 years that was not accurately presented in the recent meeting at the Council on Aging. We've talked about it. We understand it to be a million dollars over 10 years. That's a conversation we've had amongst this group. So, effectively, the audience needs to hear, we would forego, whatever that math is, $100,000 a year. That's information that's really important for the residents of the town to understand. I just want to make sure that we're not conditioning a thought process. And it felt to me, the way that, the way that that presentation was given by Tim, we were conditioning a thought process. And I just don't think that's a responsible approach.
I'll pass that along to Tim. Thank you.
I agree with your thoughts 100%.
Yeah, and I kind of picked up on the same thing. So, I did email Tim about the misrepresentation, even on the website, as to how much the town has received. And on the website, it says the town has received $2.8 million, was it, or two, 2 million? And so, I had, against just what you had said, Sean, I reached out to Tim and I said, that is an inaccurate representation. Some of the money was received by DCR, and it was spent in Milton at Houghton's Pond Improvements, but it wasn't, the town of Milton did not receive the funds. So, I haven't checked recently to see if that inaccuracy was corrected on the website, but I hope it was. But I also went back and printed out the law of the, the MBTA. And again, to your point, Sean, that nowhere in it does it say that we have to, you know, have to do everything that we are reporting that we have to do. So, I want to make sure that the residents of the town know what the law specifically says, which is different than the guidelines. So, you know, I've, I had a couple of conversations with Alex Whiteside before he passed away, and there is definitely a difference on the law and the guidelines. So, I just want to make sure that we're not confusing the guidelines as law. So, if anybody wants to read the law, they should just go on to the Mass Government website and just read the law and not confuse it with the guidelines.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And I'll, I'll check the website to see if that can be clarified.
And just, I had a, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. I was out of town. But I did have a conversation with Tim this week, and I told him that I, when he said he wasn't going to be here, that I wanted to share it with the, the board. Because as we have been trying to look at ways to, to be compliant, to, to work with the guidelines, you may say, and looking at creative strategies for our town, what I just keep coming back to is the fact that we are being categorized as high-speed transit community. And we are not. And whether, if you look at the red line, if you look at all the stops, Milton is not listed on that. We don't have a high-speed transit. And we are being asked to create the, a number of units as if we have the most efficient transportation system in the state, and we don't. Excuse me. What we have, we are, I don't think it's great. Tim said, well, you know, we could really try to, you know, talk to, it's no longer DHCD. They've actually changed their name now, which Josh can.
Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
There's a new name, because I attended that.
Executive Housing of what?
Housing and Livable Communities.
Yes, so it's under a new, new title. I did attend the historic, doing MBTA zoning and, and how to preserve his.
I was also there.
And you were also there. And it was, it was, it was really interesting to hear what Brookline and Ips, which were doing with their, with the historic properties with this. So, what I'm not saying, I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying that I'm saying no to, to doing this zoning, but I think we need to work with the select board and with your, with the office on addressing the fact that we are being asked to develop 25, to increase, well, to zone for 25% of what our town is based on being a high-speed transit community. That's saying that we have a better train system than a commuter rail, which we do not. We don't even have, you know, nearly the capacity of what a commuter rail would be. And capacity is one of the biggest issues. The MBTA does not track any of the ridership. It used to be that you would pay. It was always a historic link to the red line, which is, which is high-speed transit. So, we all understand that. But this is a historic trolley that in no way, shape or form is, is high-speed transit. And I just think it's, what is being asked to us is overly burdensome considering that the, the real capacity and the condition of, of what we are, that what we have, which is a connector, which is really no different than a bus taking, going to Ashmont Station. We just have this little trolley. And I love our little trolley, so I'm not criticizing that. But it would take different tracks to be a, to be a high-speed transit. We don't have the track capacity that was historically looked at at one point, is to, was to change the tracks and put high-speed transit along that line and reduce the number of stops. That was, it was opposed by the community, so it never went through. So, we remain a small trolley. And I just, I think, you know, Tim was saying, you know, he's open to, to approaching this. And I think with the cooperation of the select board, I think a much more reasonable density unit count could be obtained if we, if we work together on this. And so, I would like to see Tim, with the board's support, I'd be happy to talk to the chairman of the select board, who has great concerns with the conditions of the MBTA, you know, with our, with the access, the decrepit, you know, condition that we've been left. And I can tell you, if we were, if we were stopped on the red line, those stairs would be fixed. They would have been repaired. But we're not. I, you know, I look at the conditions of the under, you know, structurally, I think we're not, you know, we're not the red line. We are a connector to the red line and to high-speed transit. So, I would be happy with the support to, to move forward on that. And doing this in parallel, because we're looking, you know, at, obviously, our, our locations and where we, where we could implement some zoning as a possibility, as a choice, if our town chooses that. But, but certainly, we are an adjacent community. We are not a high-speed transit community. And I think we need to be really firm and, and strong with that, because, you know, they can say all day, it's high-speed transit, but it's not, it's not high-speed transit.
I certainly support that point of view, because it is not. We, in my opinion, we've been misclassified. And if, if that's your intention to, you know, speak with the select board chair, then I, I support you doing so.
Okay.
100%. We need a little pushback.
And, and I would hope that maybe you could also speak with our electeds, Senator Timothy and Rep. Driscoll, because I really think that we're going to need help.
Yeah.
And I think they, they could provide some help. So, if you could reach out to them as well, invite them to our meetings and, so they can hear specifically what we need help with.
And this would also allow us an additional year. This is, this is a really big deal. I mean, what we're being asked and, and how we do this. And this is, it's important that we get it right, because we only have one chance. So, if we had an extra year, it may make it more feasible for the town, that, that the town feels like we have a good strategy, we have a good plan on how to implement this and how to, how to pay for it and the cost that would involve. But, but certainly, an extra year for the planning purposes of getting this right would also, which, as an adjacent, or even a commuter, the commuter rail, they get two years. You know, we've only been given one year, so.
Tim, I would certainly appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would, it would.
About that.
Yeah.
The, the, I think the fact that no matter what the outcome is, we should absolutely be classified correctly. Whatever the outcome is, is almost separate from how we're classified as a town. And we haven't been, at the presentation, I think the resident's name, is it Mark Cristo?
Mark Cristo.
Mark Cristo seems to have pretty significant knowledge of the trolley line and the history of it. And he's lived in that neighborhood for an awful long time. And he spoke, he spoke with specifics in regard to that, the classification of that, of that, of that trolley system. And I, I don't think it really takes one that has deep understanding of transportation. I think it's pretty, just common sense and knowing it and riding it and going, looking at it. It's, we're not, that's not.
Yeah. We don't have a high-speed, high-speed transit stop in Milton, so.
Plus, an extra year would give us time to just alert the electorate, all the voters of Milton. I'm sure 200 people answered the survey. That's great, but there's 20,000 people in the town.
Almost 30.
Almost 30. That's an even bigger argument to try to push this off a year.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern, is that people just don't know about it.
Exactly. I, I share your concern. It's, it's shocking that only 200 people respond to that survey.
If we had 100 people in the keys room, hopefully we'll get that many.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, no, and I'm not faulting you. I'm just saying, an extra year would give people time, just to, for us to spread the word, for people to know about it, and hopefully get involved.
Like, do you ever reach out even to the, the schools? Because I know that they have, like, programs where they put notices in their kids' backpacks, or they send out emails to the residents?
We, we've not engaged with the schools. Certainly can. I, I'm, I'm certain, I've seen, when we posted things to the town website, obviously in Milton Times, that gets picked up independently. You know, the things we can do directly on, on, on social media and on the town website are one thing, but we, we've not reached out to the schools to, I don't know, get my QR code for the survey and kids' backpacks.
Just like to give it to Council on Aging, do it with the schools. It's fantastic.
It's not a bad idea. Good. Okay, great. So, I think, unless there's anything else, Josh, that we'll look forward to the 15th, and hope, hopefully people can join us, so.
Looking forward to it.
Great. Good. Thank you. And I understand you did do a great job, so, from everyone who went to the first, first forum. So, the next item we have under old business is the zoning recodification discussion.
Can I make one more comment?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I apologize. I'm going, I'm going backwards. And just a recollection to that, to that, to that particular Council on Aging event, you were present. One thing, Jim, you were there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. One, one thing that I, I just feel a little uncomfortable with is putting a map of the town up and asking anybody that attends to suggest where we should put this, where this should be. You know, I just don't know that that's right, you know? I mean, what right do I have to say that I'd like it to go in Josh's neighborhood or your neighborhood? And just for people to just, I don't know what we're getting out of it, but it seems to me that, you know, I, I just, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the best path. Tim may have a different point of view, wanted. Obviously, he put it up there. But, you know, to, to allow any resident in town to show up and say, you know what, I think a great place would be right up at Maggie Street. You know, so, that's, I, I think it can create conflict and, and, you know, and it's, it might be, we might not get the benefit out of it that we're hoping to get out of it.
I 100% agree. We also got like seven stickers, all told, I think. We, we were very careful to use like the sort of, the terminology of where this type of housing would fit in most appropriately, speaking more to density appropriateness rather than.
Yeah.
Spot zoning. But I, I totally hear that. We didn't get a lot of engagement with it. We're not planning to do it at the 15th.
Okay.
Meeting. But our, our survey from the beginning has asked for where outside the transit area do residents think would be appropriate.
Yeah.
We, we haven't, we, we did get a couple that said Tim's backyard. But.
That wasn't me.
I couldn't tell, even if.
Well, the challenge we have, Josh, is the town is almost entirely developed. So, when, when anyone is to suggest any part of town, it's probably going to be in someone's neighborhood.
Exactly. So, we, we trusted the residents to have an input on that. But it is, you know, through the lens of the analysis we're getting from our consultants, Tim's expertise, and what we, all the compliance models we've also brought to this board.
So, I'm guilty.
The rise, Indian cliffs.
Lost in golf course. So, I'm guilty of not reading the survey. But is there a question that specifically says, I do not want development? Is that an option, where you can click a button and say, I don't want this?
No. There, the, the question that I, I spoke about earlier was, that the specific ask was, if your property is rezoned under this, under our compliance, would you be interested in redeveloping your property?
Right.
To get the out, see the out type of, if, if this was to be felt, who would be interested in taking advantage of, of that increase in the, the potential for their law? Because there was a relatively low interest in that, we read that more as, as a lack of interest in personal redevelopment, rather than extrapolate that to support for the, the law in general. We, we don't ask a question of, should we comply or not? We're, we're trying to get data for how Tim and I can best create and, and test models for compliance with the law. So, so that wasn't included in the survey.
Should we include it?
I think it should be, because you definitely get a flavor of who wants us and who doesn't. So, you could say, you know, do you want to pursue the MBTA zoning or not? And then say, if you want to, where would you like to see it? But it's important to know if people have an option to say, no, I don't want this, or kick the can down the road for a year or two. That would, to me, that in, in my decision-making processes, as a board member, I'd like to know what percentage of our survey recipients don't want this at all. And I think that's a very important question to put on there.
I, I hear that. And I also think town meeting, when we have to get something before time. And I also think town meeting, when we have to get something before town meeting, we'll, we'll also be a barometer for that. We've not received a lot of engagement on this subsequent round of survey questions. So the data we get from an additional update may, may not be super useful, but I can add that.
Yeah, for the next survey that goes out, I'd love, love to see that on there.
Or not even for the next survey that goes out, but just to update the existing survey because it sits on the website.
Sure, oh, right. I didn't realize that.
It is evergreen because we've posted those throughout town. We're, we're updating it and making them separate sections, so. So that way hopefully it's, it's as clear as possible. No one is using a dead link or, or getting a QR code to nothing. Or we have a shortened dead link to Milton MBTA survey.
I think there's an opportunity to get the message out in a more broad way to the town. And, um, we, uh, we have mailings that go out to every resident of the town and we should take advantage of those mailings. Everybody that has a water meter gets a water bill, right? We, we could include, you know, people open their water bills. There's a lot of things they might not open, but I'm sure they open their water bills.
Excise tax.
Excise tax, whatever it may be. But, you know, a simple, uh, something simple that, that, you know, just, it could be, I'm not sure who might write it, but, you know, please be aware of the MBTA communities legislation and, you know, and put the QR code right there, you know, and allow people a chance, you know, this is, and just alert people that it's out there. Publishing it in the Times, you know, and all the other places that we might try to place it, it's just not getting through. It's not out there. People don't know about it. People that live in the neighborhoods that would be most affected by it don't know about it. And, um, we can all wonder why. I, I, I don't, I don't exactly know, but, um, I think we should take advantage of the mailings that the town has and find a way to include in those mailings.
It's a great idea.
Or just get the list and pay for it. We have a budget now. I didn't realize that, right? Just three grand, five grand, whatever it takes.
A mailing's pretty expensive. I mean, you're, you're, we're already paying for the postage for many of these and it wouldn't affect the postage cost, I don't think, to have.
To include it in that already existing mailing.
Right.
I, I can't speak to legalities of including not a bill in a bill mail, but, um, we can explore as, as much as we're doing. We're, we'll be at the Milton Farmers Market a couple of times over the summer.
You know, you, you're making a great effort to get out to, and, you know, trying to get people's attention by going to places like, uh, kids' athletic games and, you're only going to capture a small fraction of people. It's, it's, we need to get to the masses. We have 28,000 people. And when you consider the number of people that go to the particular venues that you're going to, it's a small amount. And it's probably a demographic that's not representative of the town. You know, you go to athletic events, you're going to find people that are probably generally under 40 years old, you know, or under 45. What about everybody over 45? They're not there, they're not at Little League games, not anymore anyway. I, I'm concerned that the message isn't getting out in the ways that I, as I said, when you guys made that presentation, credit to you for being willing to put forth the time. You're talking about hundreds of hours that you're willing to do. I just don't know that it's as effective as it could be.
Yeah, I totally hear that. I, we, we don't have atomic capacity. We're, we're doing as much as we can and absolutely embrace these other avenues. And, uh, I, I really believe in that, that ripple effect, you know? If we reach 70 people at a Little League game, that they will talk to another two or three people each and it's actually.
Hopefully.
Compounding is, is our hope because this matters to people and if they, that matters, hopefully they, um, you know, take it and pass it along. But I.
Thank you for.
Appreciate these and both will do our best to.
All your work on this.
Will you follow up with the legality of the mailing issue?
I, I'll ask town council.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think they put in donations. They look for donations in the bill.
I'm not saying that the, the, the water bill, for example, is the only. There's got to be mailings that we're sending out all the time. I'm trying to recall now the ones that come to the, but, you know, there, there are some that people just aren't going to open. That's, that's one I think that people do open.
Yeah.
So if we could take advantage of it in some way, it'd be, it'd be good.
The dog license.
Yeah.
If you have a dog. Stormwater management.
Stormwater, yeah.
That always upsets me when I open that one.
Good, they're all good suggestions, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so last, uh, zoning recodification, um, next steps. And, um, we'll just be brief on this because, yeah.
So mostly the revenue is because we're still in the review process from the Attorney General's office. If that review comes back with additional stuff that is taken by town meeting, then that will be the next step. But we have, um, if, if it comes back without revisions that require town meeting to adopt, it is ready to go live in, in general codes format. The contract with general code meant that we sort of have this webpage version of our, our codes ready to go, so we'll be able to go immediately if, if there are no issues. Tim spoke recently with Bob Mitchell, who is the sort of zoning guru.
If you remember Uteal's discussion and who does their, all the recodification, his bio, I asked Tim, I said, can you please reach out? Because I'm sure, you know, why reinvent the wheel? Other towns have done this. And he said Thalmud did a similar two-step process. So he did, yeah, how did that conversation go?
With Bob, um, it, it went really well. What was reassuring to Tim was that Bob was very complimentary of general codes editorial legal analysis that they provided, which is in your meeting materials for tonight. That was the opportunity for places for improvement, right? The, what we voted on at town meeting was a sort of raw conversion of the existing bylaws into this format. And then this editorial legal analysis, the work that Bob also does, are these more substantive changes that take into consideration being consistent across the bylaws, making sure all sort of incompatible parts of our bylaws are not accidentally or they're, um, in harmony, for lack of a better term. So he, I, I can't say if he's fully reviewed our specific editorial and legal analysis, but he, he spoke highly of the work that general code does. So, um, Tim was interested in making sure the board felt comfortable in, in trusting this analysis that was done as, as a useful framework to build off of as we consider changes.
And did general code do the, you described Thalmud as going two steps as we are? Did general code do, do Thalmud's?
No, Bob, Bob did.
Bob Mitchell, um, this, this lawyer helped Thalmud in their recodification.
I see.
So they may have already hired, they may have hired general code or someone like general code. And then he took it to the next.
Yeah, Bob, Bob is, is responsible for analysis and, analysis and review of our projects. And, uh, general codes, um, is basically kind of the, the primary body that does this, this hosting and formatting.
I understand, yeah.
So they're often in tandem. I can't speak to what Thalmud uses them.
Sure.
So I, I did have a question because what I was given says, so, and I know this has been a lengthy process with general code and with, that we hired him quite a few years ago, but it says return to general code by December 3rd, 2021. So this document, obviously, this analysis has been in existence. Do you know if Alex Whiteside took a look at some of these things? Because, gosh, I, and I do want to say a few words about Alex in a minute, but there's so much in here, which I, I want, I would like to have known what Alex would have said on these items. Did he ever, he did so much work on, on the by, on the zoning bylaws. Did he see this document?
He didn't because he was so intimately involved with the process, especially in 2021. If, if there is a version that has his comments or the bylaw review.
Because I know there is a redline version and I just, yeah, that Tim has. I just didn't know if he saw this, this document specifically.
He was definitely leading the search when this was submitted, because this was submitted before.
So that's, it's probably a question for Tim, but I, I just, if, because it's check the boxes on, do you accept revise, you know, do you delete subsection, delete subsection, revise as follows? You know, I would love to have had.
And then this also includes, you know, specifically reorganizations that were suggested by Alex.
Right.
So, so he's, his, his reports are already all over this and are almost certainly in a red line. But I haven't provided that.
So at town meeting, I was led to believe that we were voting on just renumbering, quote, recodification. And then the friendly amendment was Sue Galvin was going to be able to make simple edits. So this seems like it's beyond simple edits, but these seem like.
Yeah, this is not.
These seem like big problems with our zoning.
This is another phase. We're not even to that phase yet.
I didn't even know this phase existed, which is kind of frustrating to, to see this, so.
Not implemented any of these changes. This would be something that, that's why we would need Bob Mitchell.
So we have to hire somebody to do that for us, right?
Correct. And to analyze whether these things should be changed or not changed or maintained.
Right. And that's a bill that's going to be above and beyond general codes bill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think we want it to be, yeah.
You know, I get that. It just, it just, this, this should have been like brought up before town meeting so we had. Okay, I got it.
It's a next step.
Just thinking it through, yeah.
No, it was.
But this is a next step that we should, probably should have presented to the people before we, you know, I'm just thinking this whole thing, like this big picture thing through.
Yeah, it was complicated because we had to get to step A before we get to step B. So, because Sue Galvin needed to be able to certify what was existing. So this.
So we're going to certify and then go back and make all these changes to our certification?
Then we'll go back.
Those will go to town meeting.
And that, we'll have to go to town meeting. So that's a whole separate.
Okay.
So I know it's, it's not complicated, yeah. So is there anything else on that that you wanted to mention on recodification?
We're in a holding pattern with the county's office.
Okay.
So this, this conversation regarding this editorial legal analysis is, you know, regardless of the PAZAG review, the board may still decide to want to have this be a conversation that you pursue and discuss the questions, uh, line by line. That would certainly be worthwhile if you were interested in pursuing that for your future agendas.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Or hire Bob to do it.
Indeed, or, or both, hopefully.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Okay, and then the last item we have is response to citizens speak. And I just wanted, if there was anything anyone wanted to address, um, the Guile Field Road. I know we've all received a lot of emails on, on that project. And I really feel for some of the neighbors who are, really have legitimate concerns, I feel. I'm not an expert into, in understanding, um, the issues of contaminants. And what, what's concerning to me is the proximity to pine, to the brook and the stream. Also the lighting, um, you know, from an environmental standpoint. And, but I also know that the need of our town for, for ball fields too and to have good recreational space. So I can really, you know, I understand how the parks and rec feels. But I almost wish there could be, based on seeing what other towns are doing and the research that, what is being learned about turf fields, that maybe we have a pause that we do, that there is further study done before, before we do this. Because we want to do it right. And whether we put more money, regardless of what we do, I think we need to improve that field. So I'm all for that, whatever way it happens. But I do feel like we might want to do a little bit more study on, on turf and the implications of, um, you know, the, the heating elements to the soil, contaminants to the soil and just how that would affect the brook and the stream feeding into the DePonset. I, I just would want more information, but, um, so that's my response to.
Well, I.
To hearing the neighbors, yeah.
I, I need to, I need to do a little bit more work myself. I, I'd rather, I'd rather not comment because I don't think I'm prepared to comment.
Right.
So I'll, 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 I'll dig in a little bit deeper and, and do some research.
Yeah.
And my only comment is, um, I wasn't aware that the field would be closed off to residents. Like, as of now, all the residents can use it. You know, it's a neighborhood asset, not just a town's asset. So when I heard that it was going to be closed off and not available for use, that was a little concerning.
After the turf fields are fenced.
Yeah, they're all fenced in, so you're taking a, a town's asset and you're limiting the use by, by, by its residents, for its residents. So I didn't realize that.
And I had also asked Tim, because it's Article 97 land, what is the precedent for putting turf fields on Article 97 land? And Tim seemed to feel like other towns, the other communities had put turf down because obviously it's, it's open space for the preservation of recrea, you know, for recreational purposes. But I just think that should also be a clarification because I, I don't know that when the plan was being implemented, if they were considering whether it's Article 97 land or not.
The, the, the plans are on file in our office. If you ever want to see them in person as well. I, I know they, the plans do explicitly call out being Article 97, so.
Okay, so they are aware, yeah.
And Tim did see other precedents.
Okay, that was just a question that, yeah.
And while there may be fencing, um, my understanding of the plan doesn't include any restricted, like access restriction, the physical barrier that might be.
So it's not locked up or anything?
Not, not to my understanding of the plan. So that may be a conflation between the fence and, and its blockage rather than a, a usage restriction.
Because I kind of thought maybe it was to keep dogs and pets off of it from doing damage, but.
Dogs aren't supposed to.
Go on it.
Get on it anyway, um, but, uh, I don't think that was the explicit purpose.
But I also think that some of the uses of that existing field won't continue. I mean, if people think they can go out there and on that, this turf field and work on their short game, that's not typically what is allowed. I mean, I, you're not going to be able to chip in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, as I look at it in terms of use lost versus use gained, the use gained is going to far exceed the use lost because the, the condition we have now limits use. And yes, there may be some, there may be some uses that just can't continue. But overall, I'd say the town benefits from greater use rather than, rather than, you know, a net loss.
One thing that stuck with me is the parking. God forbid, there's a football game at both locations with no increase in parking. I don't know, you'd be parking the other side of the high school.
Yeah.
Doable, but an awful long walk to watch your, by the time you get to the game, to see your kid, the game's over because you park so far away.
Well, chances are if there are two games there, it, it won't be two games that are of equal caliber, you know? I mean, there may be a game at the high school field, but the game on the lower field is probably a youth football game that wouldn't draw the crowd. That's just how I look at it now.
Be good.
It's someone else who's responsible for planning and scheduling. Be better.
I would need to look at that, yeah. Yeah, good. Great, well, thank you for all those comments. And so I really should have started the beginning, but we had such a full agenda. But I just, I don't know for everyone today in the Milton Times was the obituary for Alex Whiteside, who was a longtime planning board member. And I just thought this, this was so beautifully written. I just wanted to share a little piece of it. But, um, for those of you who did not know Alex Whiteside, Alex was a town meeting member of longstanding. Alex's greatest contribution to Milton certainly came as a member of the planning board, of which he was an integral, integral, integral member of, and frequent chairman for over 30 years. With his mastery of the forms and peculiar linguistics of zoning law and deep attention to both the details and coherency of legal writing, Alex almost always had a hand, more often both hands and a foot or two in the drafting of any zoning of note. One could say that he shaped the town itself by defining the parameters on which its myriad constructions were built. Even at. Even after his tenure as chairman of the planning board ended, Alex continued to provide time, energy, and legal knowledge to the town, using his influence as a town meeting member and private citizen to make vital contributions to issues ranging from the new high school to senior housing, about, about which he had penned the recent successful ballot initiative. A man of honesty, integrity, and indefatibility, Alex reached the apex of his political influence when most would have left town politics behind. At the time of his death, he had just finished a proposal to ameliorate the carnage and confusion wreaked by Route 28's infamous traffic light. With a wry wit and an unflagging loyalty to friends and loved ones, Alex will always be fondly remembered by those who knew him not only for his keen sense of justice, but also the compassionate and loving nature barely concealed beneath his stoic facade. And it goes on to speak more, but I just, you know, I think we, our town just has suffered a tremendous loss with, with not having Alex Whiteside, you know, sort of looking over things and, and being our, our sounding board when we have questions. And he will just be greatly missed. He was quite a force and, and our town is better because of the work that he did. So just wanted to acknowledge that and, and.
Well, I think.
Sadened by the loss.
I think it's appropriate acknowledgement and it almost seems like you can't really do enough to acknowledge what he did, you know, because there's a standard that's been set by others in the town of giving of yourself to the community. And, and he certainly set a standard that is almost impossible for most people to achieve. You know, I know there are others in the town, you know, that, that have done similar, but Alex, that's phenomenal. I, I'm just completing my first year on the planning board. I can't fathom that I need to do 29 more to match Alex.
More plus years.
No, it's remarkable. It really is remarkable. And, you know, any town that has a resident that is, that is as willing as Alex was, you know, to put the time in and put the effort in. In, in his case, when you're working through the nitty gritty of writing zoning and you know what that challenge is like, Josh. I mean, that is, that is very difficult, time-consuming, very deliberate, specific work. That's tough.
Yeah.
It was amazing what he did.
And I don't think everyone, anyone, a lot of people didn't realize how much time he put in outside of meetings. He would answer questions. He was active in our, in our neighborhood and he, he did so much and he didn't ever complain about it. He didn't need recognition. He didn't need to, to, you know, explain how much time he has, he has, he put in. He just did it because he knew that the town needed him. And the town, I didn't always agree with Alex on a lot of things, but I always respected him and I knew that he, he approached his decision very thoughtfully and he was open to hearing other people's opinions. So the town is, is better off because of him.
And just the amount of brain capacity he had. You could ask him a question about anything. I mean, for me, it was first ADU, then MBTA zoning. And he would just have such a broad knowledge of that subject. Talk about it as long as you wanted, until you understood it. I mean, the guy was just fantastic. Just a great loss, I, I.
A great loss, yes. So it would be nice maybe if we did speak with Tim and the select board on, on a way to really acknowledge the work he did for our town in, in some capacity. So I've been thinking of ideas and if anyone else has any, but to honor his name and all he did.
That's a good idea.
Great, okay. So if there is anything else that we've reached the end of our agenda, thank you all for, who have hung in there for the end of the meeting. We're ending before 11, which is good. So with that, a motion to adjourn, if there is.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, second, good, all in favor.
Hi.
Good night, all, thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Well done, Josh.
Good job, Josh, yes.